The September 16, 2024 Auburn City Council Workshop will be called to order. The first item of business tonight is a discussion of the solid waste plan that was presented at the last council meeting by the solid waste task force. We have members of the task force here and staff if councillors have questions regarding the report. Any questions or comments from the staff about the report? Also included in the packet, the staff included the start of the development of the RFP, based on what was used last time, just to give everyone an understanding of the direction they're moving in. Mr. Manager.
Thanks, thanks Mayor. I'll have Dennis walk through where we are currently with the draft. If there's no questions for SNRB, if you recall, they gave the presentation. Council, you voted to receive that, accept that recommendation, the report. And so staff's been working through the current draft. So what we'll do is, this will be the last time this comes back before you. Any feedback would be important now as we put the final pieces together on the RFP. And then we'll start submitting that. We've had some interest from some vendors, just by us having conversations. And so we've added them to our mailing list for vendor inquiries. And so we'll make sure we have them included when we submit this. Plus, we'll also be reaching out to other vendors that we're aware of to make sure that they're included as well.
Yeah, so the staff started, what we did was, we took a draft. What you have is there is a draft RFP. We took a number of the recommendations provided by the committee and worked those into the draft that's actually in your packets. What we're hoping is additional conversation in any other direction that comes tonight, then we'll actually finalize that RFP. I'll quickly summarize just what we captured from the recommendations, like I said, in the draft. Some of the recommendations are really part of the analysis of our, once we receive the RFPs, or as we're going forward. So not to say that we won't work with these recommendations, just as far as the actual drafting of the RFP, what we included. Under general recommendations, data management, we did put an emphasis on requiring data be provided to us from the contractor as we move forward with that. Under domestic trash recommendations, recommendation A, continuing current service level of curbside collection of household trash, that obviously was carried through in our RFP. Using the bid RFP request proposal process to analyze feasibility, cost of various solid waste collection, and other divergence strategies. We put a general statement in our draft RFP that basically reads, "The city encourages proposing vendors to submit their best proposal possible. The city proposes multiple scenarios. City may consider a single stream approach, dual stream approach, and/or an alternate proposal scenario if collection design and price implications prove to be financially and environmentally advantageous." Basically, what we're going to stress and emphasize is, if there is a creative solution, if you have something that maybe we haven't asked for specifically, we want that creative response. We want that opportunity to kind of open that up a little bit more broadly, so we can hear from contractors if they have a suggestion. Under recycling recommendations, instituting a weekly curbside collection of recyclables, we did add that as an option. We have bi-monthly, excuse me, and then also weekly, so we'll get both of those back, be able to compare those. Also under recycling recommendations, keeping the Grace Lawn open as a supplemental site. This is the drop-off location and consider adding additional such sites. We added language that certainly kept that site, but also looked for, left it open for us to negotiate additional sites as we move forward. Under the food waste program, these are all great recommendations, but we really feel this is likely going to need to be a separate RFP from the other solid waste and recycling. So I would expect examples like to continue with Grace Lawn Road and South Main Street drop-off locations, this would be included in an RFP for food waste specifically. Add additional drop-off locations, that again would be included in the RFP. And then including the schools in the food waste collection program, mini lessons in the classrooms, and picking up food waste from the cafeteria. Those would be recommendations that would absolutely be incorporated in a food waste RFP when we got to that point. So overall, those are the recommendations that we felt we could incorporate very cleanly and easily into the RFP. All the other recommendations, we would continue to work through, I think, as we receive bids and we continue to look at additional programs or expanding the program or improving the program, we would look to incorporate all those other recommendations.
Questions or comments for the council? Counsel Plaett.
Again, thank you to the SNRB for putting this report together. I think it's super helpful in the creation of the RFP. My question, or one question, is with regard to the frequency of recycling pickup. I think previously you said it had been bi-monthly, so every two weeks. And I know we'll get both options, we'll get a weekly and a bi-monthly or bi-weekly. I was curious if in your findings and interviews, other than the convenience of weekly pickup, were there any benefits to weekly pickup?
I think the major benefit for weekly pickup is really a behavior kind of modification, that it's easier for people to remember weekly when the recycling is picked up. And so it both encourages compliance and maybe recruiting, to recruit more people to it, to recycle it as well as put their trash out. So those were, and there was some evidence that, and this would be not in our report, but in the previous report, that the Bates students worked on, actually, they dug up some evidence that those kinds of things were helpful. Anybody else have a, Ben?
Yes, there's a huge one, and that is when it's bi-weekly and they don't pick up on a particular day because...
Dr. Lonsbury, could you come up to the mic? I just want to make sure people at home can hear you.
If the pickup is bi-weekly and they don't pick up because it rains or snows, then people don't get to have their recycling picked up for four weeks. And if it rains or snows the next time, it's six weeks. What could be more discouraging?
Thank you.
Brian Cullen, also on the committee.
Hi. Well, the other behavioral point is that things that get picked up weekly, you're going to err on the side of, you know, getting rid of the stuff. So recycled material will go in the trash that week, and then the next week, you may at best recycle that week's recycling, but most people are not going to store the materials. I mean, we probably all do on this committee, but most people are not going to structure their, you know, storage area to keep things for two weeks. So it's a complete disincentive to engage in recycling by having it only every other week. I mean, that is the message being sent to. It's kind of a discouragement to recycling. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the council?
I have a couple of questions. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, sorry about that. Just for clarification in this, I know last time we met, and I thank you for putting this report together and you guys' review. I talked about the importance, because I think a lot in the community like to see composting available to this, and I really didn't see, but there's nothing that really addresses composting in this. Is that correct?
Not a specific suggestion for a specific program, but in our visits around to communities that do have composting, and talking to state officials who've been engaged by communities to develop composting programs, we did, you know, that's available for the community to do that. And I think Biddeford was one place where their transfer station also is a place where people bring their food scraps that are then turned into compost that then goes back to the community. So I think they've had some success. So there are, I think, some learnings out there from other communities. Biddeford's a community of our size that we could, you know, benefit from.
Thank you, yeah. I would love to see more of that information brought back, to see if that's something that we can look into and kind of see if that's something we can, as a community, be involved in. Thank you.
Important, because of the weight, and we tried to emphasize that in the report, the weight of organics, including food scraps, if that's taken out of the waste stream, then you don't have as much tonnage that you're paying for at the incinerator.
Other questions or comments by the council? Counsel Wieden.
Thank you. Just a quick question, this may be more for city staff. Do we anticipate much competition for this? My understanding is there's not a lot of vendors in this, these areas.
Well, we're hoping to see some additional response. I believe in recycling, we will probably see at least three vendors, which is better than where we've been in the past.
Counsel Walker.
Is our goal to get to, we'll say, 20% or 40% or something in the city? Or are we just going to go back to the same old way that we did it for years and years? We were lucky to get to 13%. If that's where we're headed, we're just going to go out there and please a certain amount of people that live in the city, and the rest of us are going to pay the bill. So that's going to be kind of an argument coming 10 or 15 years from now again. We'll be back here doing the same old thing we're doing right now.
I think the committee kind of outlines that very well, about here are the steps that you can put into place to have a better percentage of participation. And so we know that if we can, as Budden said, if we make it more available, more consistent, if we had containers that had covers, if we have, you know, some maybe multiple drop locations in the city rather than just out at Grace Lawn, but if we had one in South Auburn, then we're expanding that opportunity and that access and convenience. And in doing so, those communities that have a higher percentage, they offer all those opportunities and conveniences. And so that will increase your percentage.
Other questions or comments from the council? So I have a few questions for staff. Is the intent to require EPR compliance by vendors that respond to this RFP?
What we've put for language in there is allowing the staff or the city to negotiate the materials being picked up. And that's really, at the end of the day, in order for us to participate in the EPR program, we need to match the EPR programs' materials that they collect. So as long, so that gives us the ability, basically, we wrote the language to allow the city to make that decision. If we want to be in the EPR program, it'll be an option through, with that flexibility.
Okay, I understand that, but why don't we just say to the vendors, they have to be compliant? Because it seems to me the city would be in a very disadvantaged position going forward relative to revenue if we are not participating in EPR. And we can talk further as we go along about the term of the contract, but all of, if the committee has recommended a shorter-term contract, I don't know whether any vendor will be willing to do that, but we're talking about five-year or potentially longer contracts will be bid by these proposers. And it seems to me that it's going to be much more expensive for the city to engage in recycling if we don't have EPR compliance.
Yeah, I don't disagree, Mayor. I think that making sure that we have that flexibility is important. I think that it's other areas that I think we were hoping to have more firmed up is exactly what materials will be the final list for that program. And then also, what are we talking about for actual revenues coming back by participating? We've been led down this path on other opt-in initiatives with the state, marijuana being, you know, I think the most recent example, and not having received any revenue. So we see the model, the model is not just in Maine, so we see the model. We know that there's model there. We're looking into exactly what other communities that are participating in this program are receiving, and hoping that if we're looking at that, that's what we need to identify. Because if we are, if glass is included in there, what does that look like for us? And as we pay that additional recycling cost, what's that offset? So I think there's a few things that we need to work through, but I'm not, we're not opposed to making sure that that's included in there.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to follow up on Counsel Wieden's point about organic waste. So since this report was published, the state's in the middle of an audit of all of the solid waste transfer facilities in the state, and they've actually been to main waste. I happened to be dropping my trash off down there one day, and the consultants are up to their waste in a dumpster, picking through the stuff. But their news release that the state has put out is, all of the ones that they've done so far, more than 50% of the solid waste stream was organic. So I think we need to think through this a little more. Separating this out, I'm not sure of the advantages to that. I'm not saying we shouldn't do that, but the greatest opportunity to increase the efficiency at main waste, because as Counsel Walker would know more about this, being the chair of the board there, but I believe they're up against their tonnage limit. And if the more organic waste that's removed, the more efficient that operation would be, and the more additional communities that might be able to participate by bringing burnable solid waste there. So I think that while it was difficult in the report to put a lot of details about that, I think we should drive the potential bidders to give us whatever their ideas might be about how they might institute a program to handle organic waste.
Yeah, great point. We'll include that.
Just a couple other, on the site drops, for, it's clear that if we're incinerating, where are we going? When I read this, it seems like we're assuming that the recycling's going to Lewiston, is that correct?
That's what we expect to sell.
So I'm not sure that all the proposers are going to do that, because some of the potential proposers don't have a relationship with that facility, and they actually have a relationship with a different recycling facility in Southern Maine. So perhaps what we should do is have them describe to us where they're going to take the recycling materials and at what cost over the term, and not necessarily tell them where they've got to take it to. Because that, just telling them that may cause some of our perpetual proposers to drop out of the bidding.
We've actually, we will be leaving that completely open, because you're exactly right. Some of the vendors we know will not, they have their own location that they would want to bring it to. We've already been notified of that. So we, this will be open, you tell us where they propose their location to drop it.
And the last question I had, I sat in on the EPR conversation that the task force, when they hosted the folks from Environmental Protection. One of the discussion points they had, it was centered around glass, but it could be other materials, which was that for some of these recyclable materials, pre-sorting is required before you get to the site. So I think that we want to ask them to tell us what they can do with that. The example DEP had was that it's very difficult to take glass now at these recycling facilities, but if it was sorted out, say at Grace Lawn or some other site where they sort it out by color, then they could use that. Well, and of course, it's not as convenient as curbside, but lots of people have been driving to Grace Lawn even now that we have curbside. So we might want to ask them to tell us what their thoughts are on that.
We can do that.
Any other thoughts or questions by the council on recycling? Mr. Harder?
Yeah, one additional question. So the big cost, one of the big costs in solid waste is the collection cost. And so was there any thought, and you may have mentioned this...
Need a lighter bulb.
Sorry. So one of the major costs in the solid waste budget is collection, the trucking cost, hauling. And so is there any thought in the RFP process to ways, different ways to address that other than having a bidder give you a lower cost? Technology, I mean, is there, are we looking to the bidders to suggest ways to use technology to lower the cost?
It's a great question, and that's, I think, going back earlier on, when I mentioned, we really came up with a language to allow this as open and some creativity, I guess, and for them to tell us if there's a solution technology-wise or a different way. We don't necessarily ask you for the traditional way. If there's, whether it be automated, as we've talked about, or different ways to collect it, we're looking to emphasize that and keep it a little bit more open and allow them to present those proposals to us. We'll also make sure that we're emphasizing that with the vendors and contractors that are putting the proposals in, really highlighting that language and saying that, I understand how we've been doing it for 50 years, that doesn't mean we have to continue to do that way. We want to hear those creative options.
I mean, for example, even though it sounds like you're going to do recycling and trash separately, if the same vendor, you know, had a split-body truck, and therefore they only had to make one round every week rather than two rounds, that might be a cost savings.
Exactly.
So I think the key to these types of proposals is telling the vendor what you want to have happen, not telling them how to do it. I can just tell you from my experience, 15 years, in the private sector, with all our customers, with governmental agencies, the very worst proposals were when they tell you how to do it, because the price you bid and what they're ending up paying is quite a lot higher than what it might be if you just say to the private sector, "This is what I want done," and let them come forward with whatever their solutions are, because they're going to be driven to providing the service you want in the most economical way so that they have a competitive bid price. So I think these bidders are well-versed in these technologies, and they're doing this business every day, and they'll come forward with their ideas about what the best way to do it is, and then the selection committee can review those. Other questions or comments from the council? Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate the work of the committee, and we look forward to the, Dr. Lonsbury.
I'm not a member of the council, but I just wanted to ask, this is the, oh, yes, excuse me. Mr. Crowell mentioned weekly pickup and lidded containers. Was there any consideration of city-provided wheeled containers? I think that's very important for recycling.
I think we'll see that in the bids when we receive them. I think we'll, we know currently, through our conversations with Casella, that will be a requirement in their proposal, because they are going 100% automated with lids on containers.
Good.
So we do know that that, when we receive the bid from Casella, it will include that.
All right, I hope the others do too. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda, excuse me, Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the proposals years past was having trash barrels on wheels and big containers. And we had a lot of kickback by Auburn residents, those that are seniors or have mobility issues, because some live on a hill, some, it makes it very hard for them to get these large containers down to the street, especially when they're full. It's not quite so bad going back when they're empty. So how are we going to handle the seniors that can handle these, or those with mobility issues, if we're forced to have these huge containers?
Yeah, we're not the first community that's going to be mandated to manage that. I think we'll address that when it comes before us. I think where we have the authority and ability is to determine the gallon size of those containers, and whether they're one container, two container, and what those restrictions might be, and then I think we'll explore it that way.
Thank you.
Anything else on this topic? If not, we'll move on. The next workshop item is hunting restrictions on city-owned property. This is the parcel on Summers Street we talked about in workshop earlier. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, council. We do have a couple guests that are going to just talk about, we've had some conversations with the Maine game wardens regarding, really taking a look at are there some other alternatives and what this looks like. So this is the beginning of some multiple conversations with you as we prepare for this. As we mentioned before, it's not going to take place right away, but we're going to continue identifying some solutions. And so Tim, I'll let you start and introduce, that would be great.
Deputy Police Chief Tim Kugel. Basically, I just was, I was asked to kind of bring what complaints that we have had for hunting. We have, I think, I can locate three specific complaints for hunting on the land where they have been granted permission. The three that I've looked into, one was the individual hunter was kind of turned around, thought he was on the land he was supposed to be on, and he wasn't. One was actually a hunter calling in, like a U-Haul that had been left on the side of the road, and he was concerned about that. And then there was another one, similar type situation. So we haven't had a lot of substantiated complaints about people doing illegal hunting on this particular parcel.
Okay, hello, my name is Scott Lindsay. I'm a wildlife biologist with Maine Department of Inland Fish and Wildlife. I work out of the Gray Regional Office, and Auburn is within my area of responsibility. I was also asked to provide some input on this by Steve Thistlewood, who works for Warden Service, and unfortunately, wasn't able to make it here tonight. But he gave me, he briefed me on the issues here, and I spoke to Deputy Chief as well briefly tonight, too. And I got, I have a little understanding of what's happening there. And I guess what I would just add to this is, this area is within what is called an expanded archery zone for deer. That is an area, and there are about maybe six or six to eight of these in the state now, that are specially designated of areas that have high deer populations and potentially areas that are going to have, could really grow into higher deer populations. And they tend to be in places where there may be some restrictions on firearms use. So once you have the restrictions on the firearms use, it can really hamper our ability to manage deer, since most of that is done during hunting season. So archery has really filled in a real important niche, and it has become more popular over the years, particularly now since crossbows are kind of grouped in with your standard compound bow. It opens it up to people that can use a new piece of equipment out there. So it's very, very important in our expanded archery zones, which again, are going to have a longer length of the season than the regular Maine hunting... a longer length of the season than the regular main hunting season is. And also, there's higher bag limits there. And those bag limits is going to mean you can take more doe, female deer. Still only one antler deer in the state, but there are opportunities for taking additional female deer, which from a management standpoint is the most important factor in managing a deer population. It's controlled by the does. So expanded archery provides a very critical role in maybe getting people into places, some of which may not be very good, safe and appropriate for hunting with a long rifle, but they can be very safe and compatible with bow hunting or crossbow. Most hunting, most deer with a, taken through bow hunting, I'd say it's going to be done within 30 yards, many, much less than that. I would say usually, I'd say you top out at about 30 yards. So that is a much shorter distance than would be effective range for using a long rifle or even a shotgun. So archery is very, very important to us, and I see this property is about 60 acres. I am familiar with where it is, up in Young's Corner area there. I have not been on it myself, but I've been by that many times. And I would just say that consistent with what I would recommend to other communities, probably more so the ones along the coast where they kind of can have some issues with this more due to higher housing densities, I would always advocate, when it's safe to do so, to have as much opportunity for hunting in these areas as you can. I would say if you look at the harvest data from Auburn, Auburn, Turner, Standish, those are towns within my region that traditionally and consistently have had amongst the highest deer harvests in the region and sometimes in the state. Now, again, Auburn's a little larger than most towns geographically, Turner as well, but even if you take that factor out, it's still a place that consistently does have a lot of deer in it. And my concern would be, when you start rationing back opportunities for hunting, even a little here, a little there, I think incrementally it can really add up. It can provide what we call a refugia for deer, where they're likely to reside. They are not dumb. They seem to know, I don't know how, but they seem to know where to go to be safe. And it's usually not my woodlot during hunting season. They're there all the rest of the year. I see them, I wave to them, and they're not around come November. And so somehow they know this, so they find these refugia. And if you set these areas aside, don't hunt those, then you're going to have that opportunity where deer can remain there. And I'm not going to tell you one 60-acre parcel is going to result in an explosion of deer in Auburn within three years. But I will say there's ample evidence to show that once you start restricting hunting opportunities geographically in an area, it can allow for increased production of deer. And we've got a very productive population here, so I would definitely advocate for keeping that open unless there are specific problems that have occurred, user conflicts, if there's not a clear boundary line, that's maybe something we can look at. Another thing I'll tell you is I have also managed and set up some deer hunts in very densely populated areas. I do some out on the Cassco Bay Islands. Initially, they were very opposed to it. Once they figured out we could do it without any impact at all, they were kind of thumbs up, okay. Also, Wells Reserve is another one. It's a 550-acre conservation land down in the town of Wells, right on the ocean, and it is totally laced with recreational trails. People go, they bring their kids there, they walk through there, bring their dogs through, and these trails are going right near places where there are hunting stands where we have bow hunters that are permitted to be there. And we have really had no problems. There have been no real issues. We're very transparent about it. People know that they're out there, they still go anywhere. No one's been hit with an arrow, no one's come close to it. So I really think it's something that, it can be a very, very safe way to hunt, and particularly since it's a very close-range hunt. You're not dealing with something that can, you know, you shoot 300, 400 yards, you're dealing with something, again, that's probably in that neighborhood of anywhere from 10 to 20 yards sometimes. If you're good and situation is right and it's safe, you can go up to 30 yards if you know what you're doing. So that's what I would recommend is within that expanded zone, that is another reason why I would say keep as much of that open as possible. Unless you get in a neighborhood where you're houses and people are right next door to each other, that's different, I can understand that. But I don't think this property falls into that category at all. So that is my input on this, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Mayor, just real quick, so Game Warden Thistlewood, when I met with him and Chief Mowen, we talked about some alternatives and so, or some solutions, I guess I should say. So one of them was that he did offer the game wardens would assist, and because this is municipal property, could assist in posting this property to be by permission only. And a couple benefits with that with by permission only is now we have a registry of who's using that property. If there's an issue or concern, then we know the list, we know who should be in there, but also they're assisting in that posting, which would be, would be very beneficial. We do not currently have that as a policy within the city. If the council would like to use this as an opportunity, almost a pilot, to say, let's look at this one parcel, let's explore this, and then determine how we would move that through other parcels we have. We also discussed regarding the close proximity to whitings and currently not being used. However, if efforts are done moving forward and there's, you know, we're having some conversations regarding this property, you know, if there's a future farming in that area, that certainly creates a challenge if we're not managing that deer population. And I believe, and I wish he was here, but he did mention regarding probably not providing any permitting on that farm for harvesting deer. And I think you might be able to speak to that.
Yeah, no, I think, yes.
I think that would be better rather than going through a formal permit that gets issued for an area. It would be something that you would go through, kind of a municipal registry, and some of the towns are considering this as well. I'm actually working with the, a particular part of the town of Yarmouth, and they're looking at actually expanding some additional hunting opportunities in an area similar to this. And that's, I think, what we worked out with them is we'd say the town office would be the place where a hunter would come in and say, hey, I'm looking for this place to hunt. I really like it here. And the, at the town office or city office, they would kind of issue them permission to go ahead and do that. So you'd have a record of who was there, and certainly that boundaries could be posted saying that. And that would be legally binding, that someone would have to get permission to be on there while in the process of hunting. So that would be one thing you could do to, you know, the most liberal way is to have it open to everyone that has a hunting license and expanded archery permit or a regular archery permit. The other way, if you wanted to hem it in a little bit, but still provide opportunity, which is a far better alternative than shutting it down, than it would be to go through a permission process where you can go through and get, sign onto a list. Yes.
Questions or comments from council? Council Milk?
Yes, thank you for that information. There, it's important, as I understand, I'm not a hunter, so is it possible to restrict which kind of firearms you can use? Because is there times where it's shotgun only if you're going to? But I think you can today, right?
Is this an area, I'm just wondering if this is an area, there are some parts of the city that are closed to firearms? And is this one closed by ordinance? And that's done through ordinance, not through state law, but that's cracked it?
It's within a discharge zone, okay. And the other question I had was if I'm correct, if the deer migrate to where they know they're safe, then there's health issues associated with herds of deer, correct? As they get, could you explain some of those health issues that we as a community want to be aware of? Should we?
Yes. I would say that is, the deer themselves can actually be pretty tolerant of a fairly dense population before they start to experience what we call density-dependent factors where they might result in smaller deer or disease transmission may be quicker. So that is something that actually can occur pretty high. They do actually well up until they're around, you know, 60 to 80 deer per square mile, and then they start showing some declines. So there's many places where they do kind of well at that. But what you're going to, what's going to happen is if you have a large number of them there, then you're, and again, I don't think they're all going to have this like a magnet flock to this 60-acre parcel. I mean, you've got a huge city, and they're not going to all just come in here and stay here the whole time. And they have home ranges that they stay on, and they separate, the females separate during the spring and summer, and in the wintertime they can gather up again. So I'm not going to, I'm not here to say to anyone that they're all going to go ahead and stay right in here and wait within these boundaries until the season's over and then phew, they can move around. They don't seem to do that, but it can be attractive for them. And I have had places where on coastal islands where I have hunting seasons, where I've started up a hunt on a coastal island, and sure enough, you're out there and the boat coming back, and there's a group of eight to 10 deer swimming from one island to another, you know, a half mile apart, that they are able to respond to that, and I think they do move. So you may see some more deer hang out there. It is adjacent to a road. You may have more issues with car deer collisions, particularly at night. Sometimes with people who may want to walk through there or be nearby, you may be more susceptible to tick-borne diseases, which deer are not a source of them, but they are a part of the life cycle of the deer tick. And if you have large numbers of deer in one dense area, that is something that ticks really do like because it's a lot easier for them to find blood, which they use to lay their eggs. So that's why you really want to avoid those places where there's high tick densities. That's why we have our, you know, fairly high incidence of Lyme disease kind of along the coastal plain and the towns along the coastal plain, sometimes the islands, because they tend to have higher deer densities. And again, I'm not totally blaming deer on this, but they are a part of the role of the life cycle of deer ticks, which certainly can lead to some significant human issues. So that's something that, and it's not just Lyme disease, there are other ones as well that probably are even worse than Lyme disease. So I would say in your own best interest for the deer health, for your safety of operating them, going on the roads without worrying about hitting a deer all the time, to just walking around yourself and your own public health with, you know, reducing the likelihoods of high deer densities and ticks, then I would say those are kind of all arguments that would just kind of support that. You just kind of want to keep it open and keep some regular pressure in there. Does that answer your question? I'm sorry, I was probably long-winded.
No, that's exactly what, thank you very much.
And I would just add, as he's already pointed out, the motor vehicle collision part, that if you know the area, those Young's Corner, Summer Hotel, up to West Auburn is already an area that has substantial number of car deer crashes. So we wouldn't want to, certainly want to do anything that would increase the odds of that or likelihood of.
Council Eisen?
Yeah, that's, Deputy Chief, that's exactly my question. So thanks for kind of segueing into that. Can, is the data available that you can get to the council and that data on Summer Street, Young's Corner Road, Hotel Road, and Lake Street, kind of the deer crashes around there so we can see that? Is that possible?
We can probably pull that. Well, you can pull crash data, then it's looking at the cause of it. You know, you have to drill down a little deeper. I'm not sure we can automate, like, pull that just for car deer, but we can try. But just being from the area and being around, you know, I know, you know, we just, we all know that, that like who live in the area and hear the calls of it, we go there in that general vicinity quite a bit for car deer crashes. Pretty frequent, you know, different times of the year, obviously it's more frequent, but.
Other questions or comments from the council? Council White?
Thank you. My understanding of this site is that the bulk of the hunting occurs actually in the upland wooded areas which are nearest the houses, and that's the problem for the neighbors. And that's why we have a petition from 22 people who would like to see the land posted. They feel unsafe. They've had some hunters that have been actually threatening, not recently, not on this parcel, but on another nearby parcel. And that's why they've brought this issue forward. And of course, the field area, which is the bulk of the city-owned land, is not attractive to hunters, maybe for turkey hunting. I don't know, turkey are pretty wary, but that seems to be the conundrum. I live in a similar neighborhood. I'm in a rural residential area which has like 450-foot back from the road. And then the rest of it's wild land. We have a bear living behind my house, quite a few, you know, 100 yards away. And so neighbors in our neighborhood have concerns about that. Some of them have actually posted on the rear, rear of their lots, just so people coming from the lake area don't come up into the residential area because it's easier. Another neighbor up in my neighborhood had somebody shoot a deer about 20 feet from their house. They didn't know the house was there. So the problem isn't necessarily with hunters that are local and have local knowledge, but people that come from Massachusetts or whatever and just see it's, you know, wild-looking country and decide they're going to hunt.
Yeah, my response to that would be, I would think, I can't say for all, but the vast majority of hunters are going to want to do their research because the amount of time, the percentage of time that people have now to hunt is much lower now than say it was 40, 50 years ago. Our lives are just different. People working a long time, and you just don't have as much time to go out. So you've got to make it really count. And usually you're going to do research beforehand, you get your landowner permissions, you look at your arrow photographs, you'll get your OnX Hunt, you'll look and you'll see where you're going to be, you look at the topography, and you're going to put yourself in a place where you're most likely to see a deer. So most of them are going to do that. Now, I would say as far as proximity to homes, it's by law, you cannot discharge a bow as a gun, it's in the same category now, within 100 yards of an occupied dwelling unless, there is a caveat, unless you have permission. So if Mr. Jones is there, you know Mr. Jones, you work with him, and you say, and he says, oh, I see deer walking by my house all the time, you can go there and you can go 10 yards behind his house and you can discharge it, so long as you're not shooting away from his house, you can discharge that if he gives you permission to do that. But if the neighbors don't, then that does not allow you to do that. You have to be that situation where you are pulling that back, you are 100 yards away from anyone unless they have given you permission to do so. So it shouldn't be something where they're right there, and if it was a, you know, if there might be a particular case-by-case basis where there's a situation where they've had a problem, I would say it's best to have us, would be happy to, and a game warden could do that as well, could go to the site and see if there's something specific about that that may be a problem. But, I mean, just so long as that person, is that person discharging the arrow away from the homes or are people saying that they're not coming into their backyards then?
Not sure about that. The other question I have is related to just the number of people given permission. If the city were to adopt this by permission, you know, landowner permission only, could it restrict the numbers? Because my understanding is, my brother used to hunt in Gray, and he stopped hunting in Gray because there were so many people there, it was like a war zone. Yeah. Because of the, you know, game farm. And I don't, I'm not saying that this place is like that, but, you know, there are enough people concerned that they presented a petition and wrote some comments about the problems they've had.
And tell me specifically then, the nature of their complaint. What was the problem that precipitated the complaint to you?
If you, I've got an extra copy of this if you want to take a...
So along that lines, I have, reading the, I'm assuming, Council White, this came from the people in the neighborhood. So reading the narrative on the back, I think, to me, it raises a couple of questions. It isn't clear to me if the issue here is firearms, hunting issues, or whether it's archery hunting issues. And it isn't clear to me from their write-up if the issue isn't what appears to be illegal hunting, wouldn't matter where it was. So I do think it would be helpful to have a better understanding of exactly what the concerns are.
I guess the problem with this format is we're having a workshop in which the public isn't allowed to speak. So as a result, we get this, but then they're not allowed to comment back to us. That's why we need a public hearing, and we should just go to the mat and say, you want to post it, no hunting? You vote yea or nay and move on. And/or you change, come up with a compromise where you restrict, you know, access to the property by permission only.
Council Platt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, I guess I wanted to address the petition specifically. I think we talk a lot about stuff in theory, but to address the petition, um, I guess first off, I, I just wanna say I'm, I think I'm sensitive. Anytime there's discussions of banning hunting anywhere, I'm, I'm a little sensitive to that. I think it's a slippery slope and incrementally, it can really change the landscape of, of where we are. That, that said, I, as I'm reading these examples, I, I think we also need to be sensitive to these complaints and we need to understand that, um, I don't see this as issues, well, perhaps some of these folks just don't like people hunting. I'm not sure I'd wanna take action on that. But what I'm seeing is issues about access to that hunting area. Folks straying off the, the, the boundaries of the parcel, or, um, perhaps folks being on there who shouldn't be. Um, I, I wouldn't be opposed to hunting by permission. I wouldn't be opposed to limiting, limiting that by number. Um, I am hesitant to ban hunting outright on, on city parcels. I guess the follow-up question that I'd like to know is, how many acres of city owned land are in the expanded archery zone, but not in the no discharge zone? If 60 acres were affected, and I wouldn't necessarily propose to ban hunting there, but if 60 acres were affected, what percentage of the hunting opportunity is that for somebody who lives in this area?
We, we, we can check, but I, the, the nature of the expanded archery zone, I don't think there's any expanded archery zone that's in the zones that allow firearms hunting.
That's not.
Is that your understanding?
Oh, there's a lot.
Okay, so you, what your question is, this is a good one. What you're saying is, you're asking about places where the area encompassed by an expanded archery zone is, does not, um, the same as the discharge, the, the restriction on discharge zone. So there would be a small area if it was a hunter discharge zone, your gun discharge zone. And you're right, expanded archery, I think initially, early on, the intent was to have that be kinda pretty closely aligned, so long as you could have some readily, uh, you know, recognizable geographic features, roads or, um, transmission lines or train tracks, something, something so that a hunter could see it on the ground. We wanted to keep it fairly close to what your no discharge zone has been. Um, what there has been, uh, over the years, there's certainly been some, um, changes to that, that for instance, down in the southern part of the, um, city, like over like by, um, well, this is over in the next city over, and I'll give you an example, like Belanger's Farm, was, was outside of the area that was, had a firearms discharge ordinance on it. But yet it was a place where we were having to issue that hunter, um, permits for taking a large number deer every year. There was something, cause he was getting consistent damage to crops. So every year we'd have to give them. So we said, you know, that's something that I think expanded archery would be the key, cause more people can get in there, you can take more does and have more pressure. So what you're gonna see is, it's not exactly aligned with it. There is a, a good buffer around there. I think that buffer is important, um, because you really wanna kinda focus that on an area just, just out, outside of where your, just your firearms, um, discharge ordinances are. Cause sometimes again, those are just more in the urban, uh, really suburban or more built up areas. In those areas outside, you really should have kind of a cushion around those.
If, if I could just refine my question then, I, I'd just be curious, how many acres of, of, uh, if my grandpa wants to go use his crossbow in the month of September, how many acres in Auburn are available for that, such that if we're affecting 60, is that all of it? Is that half of it? Is that a third of it? Is that a quarter of it?
You referring to municipal owned acreage?
Yeah, city parcels.
Okay.
So, part of the problem, that's a very difficult question to answer. Part of the problem is that the expanded archery zone isn't set up to align with city property. It's an area and there's all kinds of different property owners in there. Some of the, there are other city parcels. Some of these other city parcels are .02 of an acre, right? I mean, it's, it's not as big as this room. Some of them might be four, five, six acres. Um, some of them are, so, uh, nothing comes to mind, the, the city manager may think of some other deputy police chief. I, I can't think of anything right away that is near this size that's in the expanded archery zone. Most of these parcels are quite small. The city owns them all throughout the city.
So I guess.
Just maybe South Auburn, that's a, that's a different piece.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not thinking of South Auburn, cause a lot of South Auburn is firearms and there may be some overlap with expanded archery, but in the no firearm zone. Um, to follow up on Counsel Platt, I think there's a couple of things we need to think about here. We need to separate out illegal activities from this discussion about what we're doing on the parcel. So, so some of the complaints I got from neighbors were interactions with people coming and going onto that parcel with firearms. Zero question about what, what they were doing. They were hunting illegally. The advice I gave them is call the police department. They'll work with the warden service to, to do this. These descriptions in here about all kinds of, um, gut piles all over with the inference that somebody is exceeding the bag limits and illegally hunting. To me, that's an enforcement issue. I think we should work with the warden service if we think those things are going on to try to reduce that. Um, and then, um, I think to Counselor Platt's point, um, the question then becomes for legal hunting, um, wh- wh- what do we wanna do? And this idea makes a lot of sense to me about registration or getting permission. And we can think about how many, um, I'm not a hunter anymore than Counselor Milks is, but I'm sure the warden service could give us some advice about, well, if you got a 60 acre parcel, you don't wanna give 42 people permission to all be out there on a Saturday afternoon, maybe, but they might be able to give us some good advice if we're going to take that approach about what's a reasonable number of people you give permission to.
Just for clarification too, when I spoke the first time, I was, the complaints that I was referring to were for art, specifically for archery, that we were able to follow up with someone. And those were the outcomes of those. It doesn't mean there's not other complaints of, you know, activity in the area, whether it's trespass or vehicles on property. There certainly is those that we've investigated and, or have been called to and taken reports on. But I was specifically talking about the, that were substantiated archery sort of complaints.
Other questions or comments from the council? Counsel White?
Um, just a process question. How do these, uh, expanded archery zones get established? Are they established by the state or, or in cooperation with municipalities?
Yes. Every year, our staff does go out and, um, we collect data on deer during the harvest. And then we, um, put it into our management system. It's a modeling program and we enter in deer, uh, winter severity index on deer. And we have a very good way, I think, of assessing based upon harvest, what our local deer population is. And we look for places that, um, have relatively high deer populations. Um, and often, sometimes you can tell that by, um, like yearling male frequencies. You'll get what percentage of the population is gonna be like a yearling age class. That's another thing that kind of adds into it. But another fact would be if, if you're in a place that does have some, um, restrictions on hunting, um, our management tools are, we're basically just have very little that we can do there. Um, so if you don't have hunting, um, and again, the data usually supports this as well. If you don't have hunting, those are areas that are consistently known to be areas with deer population growth. And those expanded archery zones are put in, usually those are, it's a public process. We'll go and we'll have a meeting in an area. Some people want it, some people won't. So we listen to all that and we really try to kinda find a compromise, something that works. But, um, but most of the time, um, those are gonna be in urban areas. We have like one, um, there's this one here. We have other ones that are down along the, um, coastal plain, WMD 24. Uh, and there's some up like in the Orenow area, kind of up, up there as well. Castine, another one, just, just these little individual places that we see as weaknesses on deer management. If we don't do that, then you run into being a place like some of these towns, um, on these peninsulas down in Delaware and Maryland. And I know when I went down to Washington, DC, I spoke to a biologist down there and he says, "Oh yeah, I mean, they've got, they, these municipalities have to hire people to come in, sharpshooters, to go do these things. There's so many restrictions there. They just don't have enough people." And you drive down a field and you can see it at, um, in the evening, you know, I mean, 60 to 80 deer sitting out in this field. That, that, that does happen in some of these areas. So we really try to get ahead of that, uh, proactive and try to just see if we can focus more opportunity in there. See, you don't get to a point where it's a very high deer population and you don't get to a point where someone can't have a garden in their backyard, or you, um, you feel like you're gonna hit a deer every time you go out on your, um, um, car, or even, or even sometimes a bike. That happens as well. So that's why we do try to kinda intervene and set these up. And we, we do monitor them. We just check and see, you know, what happens over the, the seasons. If anything needs to be changed. Sometimes the boundaries change a little bit, but we try not to do it, um, to, to change them back and forth based upon every little, um, issue that comes in. We try to keep them fairly immutable so that people kinda know where they are. And I, one other thing I was, would also just add, and I wanna take all your time here, but I'll say, does it, can you tell me what the status is of the boundary line, marking of the boundary line on that parcel? Cause it, could that be something that, that could be, uh, improved and just getting some red paint on that boundary line? It might clear up some of the, um, questions people have on where, where that is?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe it's marked today, but, um, as an active trail runner, I see that lots of places where it's important to mark out the boundaries, so you're not going off on people's private property and they just every so long put a mark and it, it, it makes it a lot easier to understand where you can and can't go.
Yep, it's good. Well, I mean, we deal with it on our properties as well. We've got about 35,000 acres of land that I have to, I'm responsible for and, and I get it. It's, we try to get out and you try to get the boundary lines done. And then you have to get them on a schedule to do them within the next 10 years before the paint fades and you gotta do them again. And if you don't do it, then you gotta go pay big money to have a survey done on it. So we try not to do that. So I understand it's, it's difficult to get these things painted, but maybe with one small enough like this, it might be kind of easier to go out and just say, "Let's just get out there and see if we can get some, some paint on it and, you know, walk the lines and follow your, your deed and try to get that, that done." And that often, um, there's, there's a lot of people in Maine that don't have, a lot of people don't know where their, their own boundary lines are on their own property. And that does lead to problems. It's best to know where you, where your line is.
Other questions or comments from the council?
Um, perhaps as a suggestion, look, it, it, um, I, I, I think the point that was made earlier, um, when they're talking about setting these expanded archery zones, a good one, you, we're not gonna satisfy the people that wanna hunt if we close it. We're not gonna satisfy the people who don't want hunting if we don't. So my suggestion would be, um, that, that we move forward in a way to try to see if we can get some improvement with what's going on. So I, I would think that perhaps staff could come up with a proposal for the council to review that, um, is, um, a permission based system to use the property that includes designated areas where the people that are going to hunt have to park and they have to tell us what vehicle they're going to use. It would make it much easier for the police department if they're responding to complaints from the neighbors. They'll know if these people are parked there or people that have permission. And, um, we, um, uh, couple that with, um, trying to work with the warden service on some enhanced enforcement efforts in that area to deal with what seems to be some recurring illegal hunting that may be going on in that. And thoughts, uh, from the council on that approach?
Counsel White?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm against banning it. I'm totally in favor and I appreciate you coming out. That was one of my comments last council meeting was to have you come out, inland fisheries come out. I am a hunter, so I appreciate your time coming out and explaining this. Um, I'm against banning the property, but working with the warden service and trying with landowner relations, because you guys have a great program, um, that deals with that. Um, the warden service has a great permission form that they give out to hunters that they do. So maybe that's something we can work with, the staff can work with inland fisheries and wildlife with that. I love their form when asking for permission to hunt. Um, it, you know, so, you know, cars, making models, that's maybe some, but I think their, their form that they have is a great form to use. Um, but I leave that up to staff. Um, you know, I'm kind of against really restricting the number of hunters. You know, they're, if they're Auburn taxpayers, they pay for this property, they should be able to use it. As hunters and going through hunter safety course, we're taught how to identify to, to make smart choices and decisions when we're out there hunting. That's what we're taught through hunter safety course. So, uh, you know, I'm, I'm open to listening about the, um, proposed asking for permission. That's always a, a safety, helpful safety thing. I'm again, I'm leaning towards against, uh, limiting the number of hunters on there, but also constantly working with inland fisheries and wildlife and their landowner relations and, and with the people that are around the surrounding areas to help sure they're educated and what, um, resources are available to them. If they see illegal hunting, on what actions to take with that and working with the police department. Thank you.
Other comments or questions from the council? Counsel White?
I guess I would like to take that approach, just so it would give the public an opportunity to comment. They haven't had a opportunity, uh, on this issue to date. And so this will at least open up that opportunity for the public to have some, you know, comment on this.
Any other questions? Great. Really appreciate you coming tonight. It was very helpful. Thank you, Chief Kugel. Um, we'll stand adjourned and re, uh, we'll reconvene in the council chamber at 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this the only copy? I would keep that if you had.
I think you can keep this one.
No, this is not the only copy. You can keep this one.
Yeah, I'm only going for a half an hour.
Yeah.
But he thinks probably in a couple of weeks I'll get my license.
Oh, good.
Yesterday, we had two, two balloon, uh, Sunday morning, there was two balloons up, mine and another. Um, guy, he launched from Cleveland.
Yeah.
And I launched from Hobby Lobby.
Oh, nice.
Yeah. And Jeffrey was trying, gonna launch at almost three on Sundays.
Yeah. The light's not on, but it's on.
The September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four Auburn City Council meeting will be called to order. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we can have the councilors introduce themselves, starting with Council Gary.
Good evening. I'm Belinda Gary. I'm a city councillor at large.
Good evening. Rick Whiting, Ward One City Councillor.
Steve Milks, City Council Ward Three.
Good evening. Jeff Harmon, Mayor.
Ben Weisner, City Councillor Ward Four.
Leroy Walker, City Council Ward Five.
Adam Platt, City Council at Large.
Anaya Eggy, Student Representative.
Mubarak Abdalai, Student Representative.
Phil Crowell, City Manager.
Dennis Dote, Assistant City Manager.
Thank you very much. I'd note, Councillor Cowan won't be joining us tonight. He was a bit under the weather and wasn't able to be here. Uh, the first item of business is consent items. There's two groups of consent items tonight. Uh, there's some appointments and some re-licensure. Uh, for appointments, um, all coming is nominations from the Appointments Committee is Arthur Wing, uh, being reappointed to the Auburn Housing Authority Board, Misty Edgcombe, Corey Keenan, Haley Warden, Elizabeth Collier, all being reappointed to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Maureen Hopkins, uh, being appointed to the Planning Board. Um, and then for, um, uh, renewal of auto graveyard junkyard permits, Randy's Auto, M and P Auto, Pearl Eyes New England, Isadora Miller, and, um, no preference towing, DBA Morris Auto Park.
Mr. Mayor.
Uncle Weisner.
Thank you. Uh, I make a motion that order number, um, uh, one, two, one, dash, zero, nine, one, six, two, zero, two, four be moved from the consent items and placed under new business.
I'll second that.
The Council Weisner has requested that order one, two, one, zero, nine, one, six, twenty, twenty-four be removed from the consent agenda and placed at new business. We will take it up as item number seven under new business.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request, uh, order one, 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 zero, nine, one, six, two thousand twenty-four taken off the consent agenda.
Uh, that's item eight, item number one.
Yep.
Um, Councillor Milks has, uh, requested that order one, 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 zero, nine, one, six, twenty, twenty-four be removed from the consent agenda and placed under new business. We will take that up as item number eight under new business. There's nothing further. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Second.
Council Walker has moved the, uh, adoption of the consent items other than item number one and eleven and seconded by Council Weisner. Uh, the vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item of business is the adoption of the minutes from September third, twenty twenty-four regular City Council meeting. Are there any errors or corrections? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Seconded.
Moved by Council Milks, seconded by Councillor Platt to adopt the minutes as provided. The vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Five having voted in the affirmative, um, um, none in the negative and one abstaining. The motion is adopted. Um, for, for clarification for the public, uh, Councillor Gary is abstaining because she was not at the meeting, um, uh, at the last session of the council. The next item is communications, presentations and recognitions. The first item of business, the city clerk will administer the oath of office to our newest student representative, Mubarak Abdalai.
I'm Mubarak Abdalai. I will support the Constitution. The duties come upon me as City Council Citizen. For the City of Auburn. Important, like Constitution. Laws of the state. And ordinance the city.
Thank you very much. Uh, I think it's important to note that this is the first time the Auburn City Council has had two student representatives and we're very pleased to have you here and participating with us. Uh, the next item of business is a proclamation recognizing the hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States and recognizing September twenty-ninth as VFW Day. The proclamation states, whereas the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, VFW was founded in eighteen ninety-nine by a small group of veterans returning from the Spanish-American War and campaigns in the Philippines, banded together to create a veterans organization that would advocate on behalf of all veterans. And whereas the VFW is a nonprofit veteran service organization comprised of eligible veterans and military service members from the active guard and reserve forces. And whereas the VFW's mission is to foster camaraderie among United States veterans of overseas conflict, to serve our veterans, the military and our communities, and to advocate on behalf of all veterans. And whereas, since its inception, the VFW has been instrumental in the establishment of the Veterans Administration, the National Cemetery System, and the creation of e- every national veterans memorial. And whereas the VFW has played a vital role in virtually every significant piece of veterans legislation passed in the twentieth and twenty-first centuries to include the honoring of PACD Act, the most significant expansion of veterans benefits in history. And whereas the VFW's hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary is being observed on September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, this date shall officially be known as VFW Day. And now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Harmon, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim September twenty-ninth as VFW Day in honor of the VFW's invaluable contributions to the veteran community in Auburn and around the world. We hereby stand with the VFW and Captain Frank W. Hewlett, Veterans of Foreign Wars post sixteen oh-three, to ensure veterans are respected for their service, always receive their earned entitlements, and are recognized for the sacrifices they and their loved ones have made on behalf of this great country. And there's some members of the VFW here. If you could come forward, I'll present the proclamation to you. Great. Thank you very much. The next item will be a presentation regarding the upcoming revaluation, uh, process by, uh, the Assessor's Office and, uh, we have Karen Scam and the Assessor and Joe St. Peter, the Deputy Assessor here with us tonight.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Harmon, members of the council. Um, we are here tonight, as, uh, the mayor has said, to get the word out about the citywide revaluation. Um, we are trying to get it out on as many platforms as possible. We've had a couple of meetings already, but for those who have not been able to attend or unaware of the meetings, we're going to do a quick presentation um, and go over some of the highlights, um, and provide some information on the revaluation. So, let's start with, um, the reason we're, oh.
Yeah, I guess I'll introduce. I'm Joe St. Peter, uh, the Deputy Assessor and the assessing division for the City of Auburn consists of Karen, myself and Ozzy, our appraiser.
I assumed everybody knew us by now, but okay. All right. Well, let's start with, what is a revaluation? The revaluation is the process that we go through to collect data to make sure that the data that we have on all properties in the city is accurate and updated and that we can equalize all the values between the classes of properties, commercial, industrial, residential, um, and distribute taxes fairly and equitably among all taxpayers. That's the reason we do the revaluation. We have signed a contract with KRT appraisal. They are out of Haber Hill, Mass. However, um, they have done extensive revaluations in Maine. It lists up here, uh, in the last five years, they have done twenty-five communities. It lists the communities. I'm not going to go through them. But we are very pleased. I, I do know KRT's work. I've met the people, uh, previous to us signing a contract with them. I'm very confident that they will do an excellent job and we're very excited to have them. Uh, we will be meeting with them in the first week of October so that we can set up a plan for some more taxpayer outreach and see how they would like to work with us to do that before anything starts so that everyone will know the process before they do begin. As we've explained before, but again, for those who have not, um, heard yet, the re- in the past few years, um, we have seen tremendous growth in Auburn. We have seen sales escalate in the past three or four years, not only in Auburn, all over the state. Everybody is aware of that. We have not done a revaluation, a complete citywide revaluation since two thousand, it went into effect in two thousand and seven. We, our ratio, um, we are seeing through the sales is very low. And so when that happens, uh, we have equity issues and we need to fix those. So, we are working to do with KRT and the, and the assessing department will work with KRT, this will be a team effort, um, to do a full list and measure. It's not going to be a desktop. It's going to be a full list and measure. What that means is we would like to see a very high percentage of taxpayers allow us into their homes to do interior and exterior, um, inspections. This will allow us to get accurate information for both the interior and exterior. And if we're going to be able to assess properly, that's the absolute best way to do it. Everybody, first question, are my taxes going up after this revaluation? Honestly, we cannot answer that. We don't have a crystal ball. We can't see three to four years out. The revaluation we anticipate will take three years to complete. What will happen in three years? Will the market change? It's possible. Uh, sales could go up, sales could go down. The budget could go up, the budget could go down. Um, all of these things have to be taken into consideration. So, we cannot answer your question, will my taxes go up? We can guarantee your valuation will go up because our valuations are extremely low. Typically in a revaluation, and I hate to say typically because it's been a long time since we've done it, um, typically because the overall valuation base of the city is going to increase so substantially, the mill rate is going to drop and usually it drops a lot. So, from previous experience, some taxes for some taxpayers will go up, some will go down, some will stay the same. I'm not saying that's going to happen again, but historically that's exactly what happens.
Okay. And I guess I, I have it from here. And just a, a statistic on that. The last time we did a revale, the mill rate dropped six points. Um, in nineteen ninety, a, a, a prior implementation of a revale, it dropped twelve point seven five points. And in nineteen seventy-five, uh, nineteen seventy-nine, uh, a previous revale, it dropped by twenty-two point nine five points. So, there's a lot of things that, that factor into that, including the numbers of the budget and, and the total valuation base. But I don't know what's going to happen, um, this time. But our goal in a revaluation is that all property classes are in balance. Um, the single family, the multifamily, commercial, industrial, land, utility assessments and, and other types of classes of properties. So, our, our job is to make sure that we're assessing these, um, according to market value. That's our mandate by the, the State of Maine Constitution. When classes aren't in balance, someone is paying more than their fair share and someone else is paying less. And I'm going to try to illustrate that in the next slide. So, this is a hypothetical situation, although it closely mirrors what's kind of going on in the city right now. If a single family ratio is sixty-eight percent, meaning you're assessing that property at sixty percent, sixty-eight percent of its market value and we're assessing it at two hundred thousand dollars, then the full potential, the full value of that is potentially two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. So, there's a difference of ninety-four thousand dollars. That's basically what I'm calling an unassessed liability. That's where, that's what is not being assessed. If we go over to the commercial side and let's say the ratio is ninety percent and it's assessed at two hundred thousand dollars, I'm doing an apples to apples comparison here, then the full value is two hundred and twenty-two thousand. So, their unassessed liability is twenty-two thousand. So, both properties require correction. And the issue with commercial properties is that there's a lot of different types of commercial properties and they're not all doing the same things. Um, shortly after the pandemic, um, restaurants with a drive-through, their values went up a lot. Restaurants that were more traditional, uh, didn't. There, there, there wasn't changes. Um, office space went down. Um, that, those, those are national trends. So, it's all over the map when it comes to what are the ratios for these commercial properties. And it's challenging to do a commercial property because there aren't a lot of transactions in a typical year. Uh, we have around seven hundred to eight hundred, uh, sales and transfers that we process in any given year. Most of those are single family transactions, not the commercial properties. So, it's, it's difficult to isolate the commercial ratios, but it's not impossible to determine a market value. There's different methods of appraisal that we're going to use. And one of the goals of reval- revaluation is to focus on those commercial properties as well as all other properties, but really drill down and get a good, accurate and defendable number for those commercial properties. So, again, both of these properties require, um, a, a correction. And when you reconcile the two together, basically the single property owner is immune to paying, uh, seventy-one thousand dollars. So, if you take that unassessed liability for both and you subtract, you know, one from the other, that's the difference. So, by comparison, the commercial property is paying a higher share of taxes. And I, this is a hypothetical scenario. That commercial property is probably assessed at two million as opposed to two hundred thousand dollars and the ratio difference is scalable. So, that full value difference is not, um, um, that, that unassessed liability is, is, you know, scale that up by a factor of ten and that immunity, that difference, that disparity is actually, uh, seven hundred and ten, seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollars as opposed to seventy-one thousand. So, it's really important that we get this equity issue right and that is one of the primary goals of a revaluation. But it's not just about the market value or the, you know, the But it's not just about the market value, or the, you know, the sales of the properties. In a rising real estate market, fixing an equity in revaluation generally drops the mill rate, as we've talked about. But inequity must also be corrected for things other than the property class, such as, do we have our building schedules right? Are we assessing that ranch correctly compared to that colonial? Or that warehouse compared to that restaurant? So, making sure that we have the correct tables loaded is important, to make sure that we're accurate. What are the contributory features of things, such as garages, commercial paving, utilities, et cetera? Do we have the property condition right? Do we have the property features right? These are things that we're going to be looking for in our inspections. And are we correctly defining our neighborhoods? Do we know what the neighborhood influences are that are affecting market value? Those are all things that we consider and kind of drill down in, in a revaluation.
People also ask, do I have to let the assessor in my home? People will also ask, do I have to let the assessor in my home? No, you do not. That is your decision to make. I realize that some people are very uncomfortable letting a stranger into their home, this day and age, I get it. What will happen if you decide not to have an interior inspection? We will send out a questionnaire to be filled out. Fill it out, return it, we will use that questionnaire. When values are established, if you do not agree with the value that we have determined based on your questionnaire, then you have the option to then allow someone in the home to do an inspection, or of course, you can just come in and discuss it. But in answer to that question, you have, you make the decision whether or not you are going to let someone into your home. Oh, let me tell you this. So, all the listers will, which means all the inspectors, will have, be driving cars that have KRT magnets on them, they will also have badges with their photo, so they have a photo ID. Their cars will be registered with the police department, so if you want to call the police department and check and make sure, hey, there's a car in my driveway, what's this all about? You can confirm that they are registered as one of the listers. We are also going to try, again, as I said before, in a couple of weeks, we're going to meet with KRT, and we're going to set up some more public meetings, and we are in hopes that the listers will be able to attend some of these, so that they, you can see them, you can ask them questions, you can talk to them. I'm not positive that that's going to happen, but that's what we're going to shoot for. KRT is also going to set up a website, as well as our website, and all of their pictures will be posted on the website. So, there are going to be several ways that taxpayers will know, these are the people that are working for the assessing department, these are the people, and only the people, that should be coming into your home to do these inspections.
And not to mention us, we're going to be out there too.
Okay, so again, there are several options. It's not a done deal, we're not going to say, okay, here's your value, that's it. We will, KRT will, send out valuation notices, and for your review, for taxpayer review, taxpayers will have the option to look over them. Maybe they're right, maybe they disagree with them. If you do disagree with them, informal hearings are the first step, either by phone or in person, or an informal hearing, come on in, state your case, why do you think this valuation is incorrect? Did we make a mistake? Do we need to correct something? After that, if you are still not satisfied that your valuation is correct, you have the abatement process, that's in Maine statute, 185 days from the date of commitment, you can file a formal abatement, and we will review that as well. And there's a step beyond that, which we hope we don't get to, because we hope to resolve everything, but we do have a local board of assessment review, who is a judicial group, that you can also state your case to them.
So, a big question we get, and we've been answering this a lot lately, are there any tax relief measures available? There are some that are available to the typical property owner, one is a homestead exemption, there's also a veterans exemption, and a blind exemption. These are the most common and typical tax relief programs that are available. When we ratio, and we're currently declaring a 93% ratio, we have to adjust the full value of that down. So, currently, the homestead exemption is $23,250 off your assessed value, it's taken off. If it's, if we were at 100%, and that's another goal of a revaluation, it's a full $25,000. Similar with the veterans and the blind exemption. There are some others, and we don't administer these programs, but I do want to put them out there. One is the Property Tax Fairness Credit, which is an available income tax credit that you can claim when you file your income taxes. I don't know a lot about this program particularly, we do property tax, not income tax, however, I do know a few things. One is that you do have to file in order to get the credit, and there are, there are some seniors who don't necessarily file their taxes, but if you do, and you use this form, you may be eligible for a credit. So, it's a, it's a program that is administered by Maine Revenue Services, questions can be directed to them, and more information, we can certainly provide links to anyone who comes into the assessing office. Another is a wildly unpopular program, it seems, the state property tax deferral program. However, I hope some people examine this a little more closely, because I've heard from people saying, if my taxes keep going up, I'm going to lose my home. These are people who may be elderly, or have some financial limitations, this program may be for you. It's the case where the state will pay your taxes, 100% of your taxes, with interest, but it's a loan, and it has to be paid back when you either sell your home, or you die. If that happens, the estate has to pay it back before selling the property. So, but again, for people who are very concerned about losing their home, this may be an option that would be...oh, and it's for residents 65 and older as well. So, that's kind of a quick overview of what we're doing with the revale. We do intend to have much more public involvement, particularly when we start developing our inspection plans and kind of timelines that we set up. We're meeting with the vendor, we just finalized the contract, but we're hoping to establish our plan, and as we do, we want to communicate that with the Auburn taxpayers. We've already done some things, we had very popular inserts with tax bills, we met with United New Auburn Group, we met with the Auburn Senior Center, we're talking today at the council meeting, we're doing a, we've already pre-recorded a podcast, look for that, I understand there's a little competition for who can get the most downloads on podcasts, I think we got a shot at it, if people download it. And if other groups want to meet with us, we're happy to come and talk to them, I can think of a few, and if they want us to come and talk, and answer questions, and allay some fears, we're happy to do that. So, we hope to announce other meetings soon, and we're going to try to do the whole gambit. We're going to do virtual, we're going to do analog, we're going to do all those things to get the word out, because we think it's important that people understand what we're doing, and that they're fully informed, and that we're fully transparent about what we're doing. Our goal isn't to raise anyone's taxes, our goal is to be accurate and be correct in our assessments, and that's, that's our, that's our genuine promise to you, that's our goal.
Questions or comments from the council? Council Milk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question, when you talk ratio, for a lot of folks, I'm starting to understand, who establishes what 100% is? That's the state, correct? So, what the 100% value is, and then you determine, you've adjusted by market sales, what the difference is, but how does the state, if I understand it's a state, determine what the 100% threshold is? You're told that?
No. Well, yes and no. They analyze sales just as we do, so they get the same information on sales. So, if properties are, if properties are selling, let's say, single-family ranches, 900 square feet, are selling for $300,000, we have sales that show that. That's what they're analyzing, that, the market is the market. Really, 100% isn't someone's decision, it's reality, it's what properties are selling at.
So, every year, they send us the state valuation form, we get that every year, and like Joe said, they have used all the sales in the City of Auburn, and they have determined a ratio. They use a complicated system, but it's, it is based on the sales. So, they may give us an overall citywide, they do give us, an overall citywide valuation, that's all properties, and they may say, your overall valuation is 98%. And then they'll break it down, and they'll say, your residential is at 92, your commercial is at 97, your waterfront is at 99, but we get that every year, and yes, it is based on what the state determines through the sales.
Got you. So, they actually give you a number on, for each of the different categories, and where they're at?
Yes, they do.
Then there's an overall, which, last time they recommended it, was 71%.
And so, the challenge with commercial, and why that hasn't, is because there have been no sales?
Well, there actually have been sales, it's, but again, when you're talking about a commercial sale, it gets more complex, because there may be franchise rights involved, there may be intellectual property involved, there may be business equipment involved, and you may not have enough of them to make a conclusion. For example, a restaurant isn't a restaurant, isn't a restaurant, because McDonald's is very different than a mom-and-pop franchise, you know, because they're very different. We have sales of Dunkin' Donuts that are, that are through the roof, but I don't think they're representative of your typical restaurant, because they are, you know, they're, they're different, and what are we actually assessing? What does that sale actually include? You know, does it include the franchise? Does it include, you know, the fit-out? Does it include, you know, there are a number of different things, which make commercial properties more complex. By comparison, residential properties, we have so many of them, and they typically are reflective of the full market value of the property.
So, when this revale, the commercials are going to be addressed the same as the last couple of years that residential properties have been, but the state gives you what the 100% is, so, in the ratio of residential properties? So, that, then we assess, we look at each property and say, it's worth X number of dollars, the state says, that's actually worth this much, and that's where we get the difference, correct?
Yes, but it's important to know that an appraisal, we may do an appraisal and find that our 90% on commercials may be higher or lower, based on a, you know, a full approach, you know, income, sales, cost, and we reconcile those things. So, we may find that this type of restaurant is worth this, and if we have compelling evidence, we can present that to the state and say, no, this is 100%.
But I'm saying, on the preview, the residential, what we've done is raised estimated to get our ratios up to 90%, which has caused, which has caused a lot of problems, a lot of people to be upset. So, that's done, the 100% is, the state gives you that number, then you look at those, and you've raised those residential, and this should have everything back to what it actually is, is what this is what...
In theory, that's what we're shooting for, yes, get it back, everything up to 100%.
Other questions or comments from the council?
So, to follow up on Council Milk, and just make sure I'm clear on this, because there's been lots of questions asked throughout the community, there was a great attendance at the meeting the other night, but there's lots of other people that have called. So, I think one of the common misconceptions is that the government is setting the value of these properties, and that isn't really how this works, right? We're in a free market economy, the value of properties is set by private transactions between buyers and sellers, as they negotiate what someone's willing to pay for that particular property, and the assessor's office is really gathering that data and analyzing it to see if our current valuations are reflective of the current free-market economy valuation or not. And so, these market rate adjustments that Council Milk rightly pointed out over the last few years, the market has been driving up the value of residential properties, both single-family and multifamilies, and there's been enough information to firmly establish that market trend, and if I'm understanding this correctly, there hasn't been enough information to establish that in some of the other property classes. I know in some, like we did a market adjustment on vacant ag land a couple of years ago, but not every year is there enough data for every property class, correct?
Yes, that's correct, and just as an information piece, we do post sales data on our website, and we have a sales map that shows recent sales that are available as well. So, the data is there, and you can, you can really see it for yourself, if you want to.
So, one of the common concerns I hear from residents, right, because they're in multifamily residential or single-family residential, is the change in the burden of who's paying the taxes. So, if I'm understanding this correctly, from some prior presentations, the single-family assessment total value's gone up, round numbers about 30% over the last four years, and the multifamily about 25%. And I think this is right, but, but you let me know, it seems like that's an unprecedented structural shift in the way the burden of the property tax levy is being paid. That over the years, that the assessor's office has been tracking this in Auburn, we haven't had that disparity and a sudden shift where the burden is being shifted because of the rapid escalation in values. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, I think you're understanding that correctly, and it's not just an Auburn thing, it's across the state. And does that shift the tax burden? It certainly does. There have been things that the legislature has tried to do to address that, and I know that they're certainly looking at ways to maybe change that, and I think there's a lot of ideas out there, maybe not a lot of concrete solutions just yet. The homestead exemption itself was intended to provide relief for, you know, a kind of a shifting tax burden, I don't know that it's kept pace, but that's, I think you're fundamentally correct, yes.
I'm going to agree with fundamentally correct.
Yeah, I get it, there's lots of, lots of technical details in there, but that's the general, right, for the public, that's the general proposition of how this, what's been happening.
It's not, it's not as severe as when you are saying that we have made those 30% adjustments and 20% adjustments. It's, the shift itself is not as severe as, oh my goodness, the residential's paying 75% of the tax burden, and commercial's only 25%. It's really still pretty close, if you look at it. I don't have the exact number, certainly could get it, but it's, it's really not severe, the shift.
And when you think about the values of the commercial properties, they're, on a scale, they're much higher, so the actual taxes being paid are much, I mean, if you look at our top 10 taxpayer list, you know, they're all commercial property, obviously.
Sure, I would just comment that it's all a matter of perspective. If you're a homeowner, or you're living in an apartment, your rent's going up, or you're writing a bigger check, because this shift in the burden has occurred, you know, from a big picture, what the numbers are, it might not be that much, but when you're the person writing the check, it can be pretty painful. I just would follow up on something Mr. St. Peter said for the public, you know, there, I think everybody on the council recognizes what's going on, and the desire for some type of property tax relief in the residential sector. And the city manager works with the Service Center Coalition, I work with Maine Municipal Association's Legislative Policy Council, the Maine Mayor's Coalition, and for the public, all of those groups are actively discussing this, and this is an issue that the city can't correct. As Mr. St. Peter pointed out earlier, there are constitutional provisions that... As Mr. St. Peter pointed out earlier, there are constitutional provisions that govern how the city must proceed in this process. And the legislature closely holds the authority for taxation in the state of Maine. But we're actively working on a whole range of ideas. And once the legislature comes back in session in January, all of these groups will be actively working with the legislatures to make them aware of the view that we have at the municipal level and the desire that the legislature take some action relative to this shift in the burden and look at property tax relief for residential. Any other questions or comments, Councilwoman?
Just a quick question. It's such a complex area. And I was thinking while you were talking about Airbnbs. And I was wondering how those are treated. Because you might have a single family, which you would look at as a comparable to, you know, comparable sales versus income. And they might be generating $40,000 a year in income in the right location. And that's not being captured and they should be considered commercial. Is that a consideration that you can do? Or is that covered by state law?
That is, I agree. That's a commercial property. If you are gaining income from that property on a regular basis, then that's, should be considered a commercial property. Again, the challenge there is, how do we track the Airbnbs? When we were out doing the Taylor Pondry views a few years ago, that was a question that we asked. A few of them said, yes, those are Airbnbs. But to try to track them, we don't have an ordinance in the city. So maybe we'll come across them. If we do, they'll, we have to treat everyone equitably, though. Again, it goes back to equity. So if we find three Airbnbs and we don't know where the rest of them are in the city, we can't treat those as commercial properties unless we have the majority of them. That, well, I say that, that, I mean, that's the way it should be. Because that's treating everybody equitably. So at this point, we do not, because we don't have a good tracking system.
And that is one of the goals of the revale, is to sort of, you know, flesh out the details of how many do we actually have? We have tried to look for them, but because they don't have a reporting obligation, it can be tricky to nail them down. We do hope to do an income approach on those, on those properties. Sometimes they'll sell as well. So we have, we may have sales data on, you know, this producing property. Maybe, maybe not. So again, our goal for the revale is to get it all right. Is to get all the details that we can to see what are the contributory values of this. Because some things that are deemed to be desirable by some may be a nuisance to others and they may not have a contributory market value. So those are also things that we'll consider in our, in our revale.
I do have just one more comment. I know that a lot of people, we can have as many meetings as we want and we can post as much information on the website as we want. There are still going to be people who maybe don't use a computer or they don't go out at night to attend these meetings. Or hopefully during the day, we'll have a couple. We're always available. The assessing department is always available. Call us up, come on in. We'll do a one-on-one presentation or even over the phone, whatever's the easiest. As we said, and this is so important, we just want everybody to understand the process so it's not as scary as it sounds. So give us a call, we're always available.
And they can just call the 333-6600, the main City Hall number, and ask for the assessor's office? Any other questions or comments from the council? No, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item will be the first open session of the evening. Members of the public are invited to speak to the council on any issue directly related to city business for items that don't appear on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to address the council, please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
Earl Bickford, I live in New Auburn. I moved to Auburn in 2002. And I bought a single-family home, a modest one. And the reason I mention it's a single-family is at the last meeting, there's a lot of attention brought to the multi-units feeling the pinch of the tax, maybe because of the tax stabilization program going away. But the fact is, the single-family homes got hit very hard also. I brought my receipts. In 2020 to 2024, my single-family went up over $600. And I didn't do any improvements to the property. Not very much maintenance either. At the Wednesday night meeting, one of the residents said that their taxes went up quite a bit, but their income didn't go up. Mine didn't either. Actually, mine went down. And I've brought those receipts too. I have my 1040 from 2020 and my 1040 from 2023. And my income went down 35%. So think about that for a minute. That's like if I made $50,000 in 2020, I made 32.5 in 2023. Those are hypothetical, by the way. I'm not going to tell you my tax, my actual taxes. So the 600, that hits pretty hard for a person like me. I heard there was inflation. I know Washington says it's down to 3.5% or something. But that's not how we measure inflation out in the community. In 2020, I bought gas at Poussins for $2 a gallon. And on Friday, I filled up at 3.45. That's how we measure inflation. Grocery cart. In 2020, $125 fills my cart. Now it's over 200. Fuel oil, we can talk fuel oil, but we don't need to. My income went down, my taxes went up. And I know the valuation isn't really going to affect that too much. What's going to affect it is the budget. Who's spending my money? Who's spending our money? And how much are we spending? And can we afford it? So I'm just asking you to consider that, especially to the aging population. And I will just recognize Counselor Gary and Counselor Walker for the years that they have put the seniors in Auburn on the forefront. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. If anyone else would like to address the council, please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
Good evening. Paul Whitten, live over on Harvard Street. I've lived on Harvard Street for 34 years combined. Went away for a little while, lived places where they told me to live. But back in 22, 23, fiscal year 22, 23, our property taxes went up 22%. Now 24, 25, they're up another 11%, all without a reevaluation. What we learned from the reevaluation team's meeting last week was the past increases were based on market adjustment. We also learned that commercial properties have not been affected by these increases for quite some time. So it looks to me like the brunt of the city's budget shortfall is placed primarily on our residential property owners. We didn't learn that the reevaluation process will include all, we did learn that the reevaluation process will include all properties in the city and it'll take two to three years. My concern is that the residential homeowners are going to get another market readjustment before the reevaluation is done. At the meeting last week, Mayor Harmon, you were asked about the difference in the budget between last year and this year. And that came out to about an $8 million increase. My wife and I went through the 59-page budget since that meeting last Wednesday. There are several items. We recognize the challenges of maintaining workforce in the current economic climate. And the maintenance of city properties, vehicles, and roads. What really struck us was the 398% increase in general assistance. I wanted to mention zero liability voters and my thoughts on pure democracy, but she told me not to. So we're not going to do that. My wife and I have really good paying jobs and we're feeling the pain a little bit. But we're really concerned with our older fixed income residents and are fearful that some may be taxed out of their lifelong homes. It's almost like taxing them on unrealized capital gains that they may never have the pleasure of realizing. I'm no accountant, but I do have an understanding of basic budgeting. We don't have money for something that we need to, that we need to get. We figure out where to make cuts, where to tighten up the purse strings. We don't pass our budgeting issues on to our neighbors. We're a little angered and a little scared for some of our neighbors. Something needs to change on how the city approaches its increasing wants and needs. We've decided to attend more of these meetings just to inform ourselves a little bit better and help spread the word.
Okay. My name's Gil Pennard. I live at 425 Stevens Mill Road, Auburn. I put up a four-by-eight sign. It says, "City of Auburn Taxes: Legal Theft." And that's how I feel and I'll tell you why. I'm 75 years old. My wife got cancer last October. She, she's in remission now. And I got hospital bills coming in and everything. And I think the thing is, is my taxes went from $4,400 to $6,000. And I'm on social security. I'm going back to work part-time tomorrow morning. That's a $1,600 increase in one year. So in six, in six months, it's $800. So I get my mail, I look, property tax went up. I get 20 days to come up with the additional $800. Where do I get that? Up in the air? No, I get it, get it out of my pocket. Where's the compassion for the city of Auburn in order to fix this? Wait, if you're going to nail me with $6,000 and I get to pay $800, you should do it for March 15th instead of September 15th. And it's just not fair. And you're all going to become seniors someday and you'll know how I feel. Now, part two. 19, I'm sorry, 2014, my house burnt down, 425 Stevens Mill Road. I lived in the Auburn Mall apartments over there, where it's flea infested, for eight months. I waited for the house, I had it rebuilt. I went down to the Assessment Bureau. I says, there's no house on the lot. I says, can we cut the taxes down? Nothing we can do. Here's what I was told. I was told, because of the state of Massachusetts and Maine, there's some sort of a law that was there and they can't change it. That's what I was told. So I ended up living in Auburn Mall, paying that, plus paying my full taxes with a house that's not on there. Is that fair? I don't think it is. I don't think it is. So again, like that gentleman said, also, the stabilization program was canceled out by the state, by all Democrats. I want everybody to know that. Vote red, try to get conservative people, these Democrats are running this country, into the ground. And basically, that's all I've got to say. I thank you.
Any other members of the public that would like to address the council? Please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
Good evening. I'm going to switch tacks a little bit. I want to invite you folks and the general public to the Natural Products and Agricultural Resource Farm, Forest, and Field Day, October 16th. We have 12-plus sites signed up so far to allow our Auburn residents and some of, anybody else that wants to come, to come visit various farming and agricultural and forestry operations in our agricultural resource protection zone. We'll be putting out more information shortly. I would love to have more folks sign up. But most importantly, I'd really like to have a whole lot of folks come and see what's going on in Auburn. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that'd like to address the council? Please approach the podium and provide your name and address. If there aren't any, I'll, sir, come right up.
My name is Anthony Correio. I responded to a well-executed scam that was perpetuated by the legislature. The purpose of the scam, the object of the scam ostensibly was to limit the tax increases for people over 65. I signed up for that. So did 3,000 other people in the city. Of that 3,000, 600 now face tax increases. Now, I don't know what their tax increases are. But if there is as substantial as my tax increases are, when we have a reevaluation, my taxes should go down. Not only that, that's not right. Why are those people being singled out and their taxes being raised now when no one else's taxes are being raised? The tax assessor has told me, your property went up. I agree. My property value has gone up. So has everyone else's property in Auburn. Now, if my property value has increased and their property value hasn't increased, that means I'm paying an unfair tax rate. I've heard a rumor that the city routinely reevaluates one quarter of the value of the property in Auburn. And they do that every four years. So they've reevaluated all the property. Now, if that's true, that means those people that are being reevaluated also are paying a different tax rate. Now, the next thing I'm going to say, if anyone believes that when this reevaluation, let's just say that the property values in the city doubled, I guarantee you that the tax rate will not be halved. I'm older than any of you people and I've seen what happens. If the tax rate, if the property valuation were to double, the tax rate might go down Now, I want to know what you're going to do about my taxes. My taxes went from $3,700 to $6,881. That isn't much to you people, but it's a lot to me on social security. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
I'm Dave Grisold, 1999 Camega, Javino. I just want to correct something. Representative Shaw said she gave the date of October 16th, which is a Wednesday. The actual date is Saturday, the 19th. And she asked me to correct that for her. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the correction. Anyone else that would like to address the council? Seeing a few points we had make, I think, to help clarify some questions that folks had. One of the speakers talked about general assistance going up 298%. That is correct. That is completely outside the city's control. The state law dictates how the city will provide general assistance and the timeliness with which they have to provide it. And then the state reimburses the city only for 70% of those costs. And the administrative costs, the people that do the work to process the general assistance, the state does not reimburse the city for anything. All the municipalities, including Auburn, pursued changes in the last legislature to increase the reimbursement rate from 70 to 90% and asked the state legislature to reimburse us for the administrative cost. Those bills died on the appropriations table for lack of funding. So there are things, unfortunately, in the budget that are mandates that come from the state legislature. And the city manager is legally obligated to... state legislature, and the city manager is legally obligated to perform the work, and there are things like that that the city must do, for which we don't get full reimbursement. The other thing I would like to put out, the last gentleman with the increase from thirty-seven hundred to sixty-eight eighty-one, I would encourage you to meet with the assessor's office. That seems like a very large increase. I would point out, we've had some people who are seniors that are in multifamilies that were in the stabilization program. So all the seniors in Auburn that signed up for the stabilization program, if they were in a single-family residence, there was no increase in the single-family residence' property tax rate that year. They paid the same thing as the last year. There was nothing for the state to stabilize, except for those that were in multifamilies. And the folks that were in multifamilies, absolutely, it seems like an extraordinary jump, because the state paid your increase last year, and this year, they decided to end the program, and so, you know, it's a double whammy. You had the increase from the year before, and you had the increase this year. If you're in that circumstances, I would say again, I know lots of folks have met with the assessor's office, so they can go over this, make sure that the increase is in fact correct, and they're happy to meet with you on that. So we'll move on to, we'll close the open session, and we'll move on to unfinished business. There is no unfinished business before the council tonight. We'll move on to new business. The first item is ordinance eighteen zero nine sixteen twenty twenty-four, a zoning map amendment to convert certain parts of city assessors' parcel IDs two-eight-nine-dash-zero-zero-one, two-seven-seven-dash-zero-two-six, and two-eight-nine-dash-zero-zero-two, with addresses of three-sixty-nine Mount Auburn Avenue, two-twenty-five Grace Lawn Road, and one-twenty-five Grace Lawn Pit Road, from general business zoning district to the multifamily suburban zoning district. This will be a first reading. As a reminder to the council and the public, the background on this is, some time ago, this whole sixty acres was changed from agriculture to general business. There was a lot of dissatisfaction in the community that that was an overreach. After the state drinking water program adjusted the watershed boundary, a number of the constituency groups that were advocating for the protection of the water quality in Lake Auburn met. They talked about this. They approached the city with an idea to rezone this, so it wouldn't all be general business, in part would be multifamily suburban. Completely unrelated to that activity, but going on in parallel, the property owner was also reevaluating the situation, and approached the city with a very similar approach of rezoning a portion to approximately forty-five acres to multifamily, leave the balance of general business. The borders of where this might be wasn't the same from the various groups, but the city council sent to the planning board the property owner's proposal. It was received a favorable recommendation from the planning board, and is now before the city council. Is there a motion?
I move we adopt it as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved by Council Whiting, seconded by Councilor Platt. Is there any, well-open public comment on this issue? If there's any member of the public that would like to address the council on this particular item, please approach the podium, provide your name and address.
Stephen Beal, five-seventy-five Johnson Road. I want to subscribe completely to what the mayor has just articulated. As a result of this zoning change last December, the, both the Grace Lawn interest group, the watershed protection group, and several members of the public perceived that this was a bit of an overreach. No one disagreed with the change of the watershed boundary. That was supported by science. Our group endorsed that change. But the change of the entire parcel to general business put the unrestricted aspects of general business in immediate boundary with the watershed, and we felt that a more gradual approach was desirable. So as the mayor has just said, we proposed a change with a parcel that would have modified part of that area to suburban residential, and the unknown to us, the property owner was developing a plan very, very similar in scope. We mutually found out about each other's plans a couple of months after those plans had been submitted to the city. They're so close that we believe that the appropriate thing to do would be to adopt those plans, which the council had recommended, has recommended. The property owner recommends, it is the property owner's plan, and the watershed protection interests do not object to this plan. We urge its endorsement and adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public that would like to address the council on this issue? Seeing none, public comment will be closed. Discussion by the council. Council Mills?
I'd just like to add, the city spent about a hundred thousand dollars on the FB Environmental report that showed that this parcel wasn't in the watershed. And the developer intended on, the owner of the property intended on doing some development there, and we delayed, 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 all of this stuff delayed for almost three years. And as a result, that development is not gonna, is not being done at this point. So it costs, so while we're talking about budgets, I want people to understand that that loss of development has cost the city a lot of revenue. And so I'd just like to add that, because the development, this is, the development is not being done right now.
Other questions or comment by the council? Council Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support the development of apartments and rents because there is a shortage. I have trouble supporting the idea of putting in as many homes and places in, up around Lake Auburn. I tried in good conscience to support this, but I cannot. I can see some, but not to the extent. And now I'm hearing from some constituents about the traffic up around there. Down the road a bit, there was a family that wants to put a daycare in. There's issues with what their plan is, but they can't do it because of the traffic. If there's traffic up around there, then how can it re-support having all these homes and families up there, until we at least also take care of some of the traffic issues? And if we're bending over backwards for one developer to be able to develop his property, I'm not against people developing their property, then we should probably try a little harder with this family that have tried hard. So when the vote is taken, I'm voting no.
Council Platt.
Perhaps, perhaps we're headed in this direction to clarify, but I have a question. My understanding of this vote is that to vote yes and rezone would actually decrease the development potential on the commercial side. There would be several general business uses that would no longer be allowable. However, housing density would remain unchanged. So to Council Gary's point, my understanding is that a vote in either direction does not impact the housing development potential of that property, just the commercial. Could you clarify that?
Yeah, that, that would be correct. The housing density won't change under this proposal. What this proposal will do is remove the expansive general business land use allowances in the forty-five acres, round numbers, reserving about fifteen acres for general business, so that if a development did occur there, you could still have a mixed-use development. I would point out a couple other clarifying points. This in no way authorizes or indicates in any way whether there should or shouldn't be a development there. If the property owner were to pursue development, it would be like any other site plan review, a traffic study would be required. The planning board would have to review the traffic study, and any of the other long list of issues related to a large-scale development like this. So I don't think this says anything one way or the other. And I would caution any counselors from drawing any conclusions relative to the recent newspaper article about Summer Street and any effect it might have on this item. The city manager and I have had extensive conversations with the property owners on Summer Street. The staff has worked countless hours trying to work with them to achieve the goals that they wanted to achieve, and this proposal that is in front of the council today would have no effect in either direction on the issues at eight-thirty-three Summer Street. Are there other comments or questions by the council? As a reminder, this is a first reading. The vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Gary?
No.
Counselor Whiting?
Yes.
Counselor Mills?
Yes.
Counselor Wisner?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Platt?
Yes.
Five having voted in the affirmative and one in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next order of business is Order one-two-two zero-nine-one-six twenty twenty-four, appointing a voting delegate, an alternative voting delegate for the May Municipal Association Annual Business Meeting. For clarification, typically, the city manager is our voting delegate. He's unavailable to go to the meeting, and the proposal in front of the council is to appoint the assistant city manager, is the voting delegate, and the city clerk is the alternate. Is there a motion?
Motion to move that.
Moved by Council Walker. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Gary. Is there discussion by the council? Council ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next order of business is Order one-two-three zero-nine-one-six twenty twenty-four, creation of the mayor's bona fide agricultural recreational and natural resource land use ad hoc committee. As explanation of this item, the counselors will recall that some time ago, there was significant action by the council relative to changing the restrictions in the agricultural zone and removing the income standard. One of the new standards that was put in place is that in order to build a residence in the agricultural zone, you must be engaged in a bona fide agriculture or natural resource activity. You also recall that staff was quite hesitant about this when this was presented in front of the council, as they didn't feel they were necessarily qualified to be making a conclusion as to whether something was a bona fide activity. And the discussion at the time was that they would work with the Agricultural Natural Products Working Group to help make those decisions. That is what they've been doing. Both the staff and the working group have found it difficult to undertake this process with no defined criteria, and would find it's going to be difficult to have consistency as they review these applications. The idea behind this committee is to develop criteria that would be potentially placed in the ordinance, outlining the particular factors that should be considered when making these decisions. The recommendations of the committee would have to come before the council, as any other ordinance change before they could, criteria could be submitted in to the ordinance. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Gary. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Whiting. We'll open public comment on this item. If there's any member of the public that would like to comment, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Discussion by the council. Council Mills?
The removal of the income standard in the ag zone was because it wasn't fair, and it was an arbitrary number that was determined that someone, the only way you could build a house on your land was if you could prove that you made money with a farm. And we know that in the twenty thousand acres of the ag zone, which is also ag and resource protection, which, if you've got a ten-acre parcel, you can clearcut it, if I'm not mistaken. You can have a gravel pit next to the lake in the ag zone, and when you try and develop that, then they'll tell you that you can't. You can do a lot of things in the ag zone that, but you can't build a house. And it's wrong. People have, people have property that they, that they purchased, and you can't build a house in the ag zone. And so what we did is we passed an ordinance that allowed if people are using some of their land for recreation, if they're using, if they wanna put a garden in. It wasn't to be that you're a working agricultural farm. That wasn't the point. And so this is just another way that the same group of people that chased the developer away from the, away from the, saved the gravel pit, are trying to keep the ag zone so that nobody can build a house in it. And so we should be having, staff should be making minimal decisions that should be, and people should be allowed to build a house in the ag zone. That's what should be happening, on their land.
Other questions or comments by the council? Council Whiting.
Just a comment, in defense of city staff, I think they feel like they're sort of between a rock and a hard place, between two polarized groups. We came to an agreement. I think this is a fair way of trying to do what the federal government does. They'll establish a law, and then they do proposed rules, and then it goes back before the legislative body, which in this case is the city council. That's all we're doing here. It's an opportunity to make it a difficult, you know, decision easier to be made by city staff.
Other questions or comment by the council? Council Walker.
Yes, I was part of that argument for probably six to eight years. And the ag zone has been, in the past, shut down so that actually, nobody could build. We didn't have any farmers that had a million dollars to invest to build a farm. First of all, it was to build a barn first, then maybe you could build a house if you made enough money with the barn that you built, to hold your tractor, or hold your cows, hold your sheep, hold your goats. And maybe you could grow enough grass so you could have enough hay to take care of them animals in the six-month of winter, if you're real lucky. We fought these people, and they're the same people on this board that the mayor has agreed to put on the board. So there is no different people out there that wanna change the ag zone. They're the same people. And if they have their way, it'll be back to the old way again, that you can't build your own home on your own land, whether it's fifty acres, twenty acres, nine acres, four acres, two acres, or down to one. That is where they're headed. That is what they wanna do. That is what they've done in the past, and they're gonna continue to do it. Now, we have a staff downstairs that hasn't come, at least up here in front of us, that's not any crying that they can't keep up with the work from the, what have we had so far for people that are built in the ag zone? Have we had two dozen? I doubt it. Have we had a dozen? Maybe. If that staff can't take care of a dozen people applying in the ag zone to build a house under these three rules that we got, that they need to follow, then maybe, maybe, as a council, we ought to find a different staff to take care of what we ask people to do.
Other question? Council Mills?
Yeah, do we know how many houses have been built in the ag zone since, since this ordinance was passed?
Mr. Manager.
We can provide that information to you. I think one thing that is important is that, as you look at the council's job is to set policy to define through ordinance, you have a definition of what a commercial business is. You have definitions of other, other areas. You're leaving a very, interpretation up to staff in this. You know, council, it's your directive on which way to go. We can provide the information about what we've reviewed and make that available to you, though.
And I'd add that I believe- You and, and I'd, and I'd add that I believe in that ordinance, we also were very, very careful to make sure that there wasn't going to be mass development in the ag zone, and that you could only use certain small percentages of your land in order to build a house, and you had to maintain large percentages of it, and I can't pull them off the top of my head, but I believe it's 90/10, or 80/20, or something like that, so that, so that we maintained the aesthetics of the ag zone, ag and resource protection, where you could, if you didn't want to build a house, you could just clearcut it. And so in order to add value to our city, where there's land that's taxed at a very low level for everybody that, whose taxes went up, the ag zone, you know, you've got people that own 50 acres with their house up by the road, they pay a very small tax on 45 of the acres of that, and they use it for their, their recreation in their backyard, but they don't want that changed so that somebody else can build a house there. And at the same time, they don't want, you know, they want to keep the, the gravel pit to gravel pit. They don't want someone building, uh, houses there. And so, you know, this is a, this is about fairness and about what people are allowed to do with the land that they own.
Other questions or comments by the council?
Yes. Uh, reading this, um, I, I find it, I find it restrictive. Um, you know, how many, I concur, getting the information, how many people are coming and trying to build, uh, farms? I do understand the concern of trying to, people wanting to take the ag zone and building lots of houses within that, but if a single family, uh, a small family wants to come there and just sink by, you know, buy a piece of property, raise a family, build a single-family home, and to where they don't have the means, because they're both working double jobs, their jobs, and trying to live, but they don't have the means to start a, a, a farm business, they become limited, but they want to have, uh, a wa- a good number of land, have a single-family home, and raise some cows, chickens, pigs, or whatever, and do that. I, I don't see the reason why we should stop them. I think this is kind of, you've got to come up with a farm plan, have that business, start this business. I think that's really, that's, that's a lot of work. I, I don't think, full development in the ag zone? N- you know, no, but I, I think that if a single-family home and, and that's what they want to do, I think that's fine to it. That's my comments.
Other questions or comments from the council? Counselor Platt.
Just a quick one. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, just, I guess, my perspective on this, where I come from, is if, if we have the, if we have the code department telling us that they feel the current regulations are too vague, my mind goes to, if you've got a vague, um, policy, I, I just feel like it leaves us susceptible to arguments, to lawsuits, to debates, and that's great. We, we want to have debates, but when it comes to getting permits to build, if the department's telling us we should take a look into this and try to have something with more definition, I don't see any harm in, in letting an ad hoc committee try to do that. If we don't like their suggestions, we can vote it down. That's my perspective, not that everyone shares that, but I, if, if the current regulations are too vague, I do believe it's our responsibility to make them more specific. Um, that doesn't ne- mean we need to restrict things. Certainly, if we feel that way, we can vote it down, but I, I would support this. To me, this is the next step of fact-finding. We're not committed to anything. That's where I stand.
Other questions or coun- Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support a person's right to have, to be able to build a home on their property in the ag zone. I have no problem with this group coming together to try to fix and add to this ordinance in order to make it better. Maybe they will come up with what one of the good counselors brought up, with that their, that, uh, conceptual plan on what they're going to do is a little too hard, or a little too vague, or too something. At least this group will have a chance to fill in the gaps of what is missing and counter anything else, or even add something we haven't thought of. I sure as heck did not like the idea, when we passed this, what we did, that a person could clearcut after we've been trying to conserve our, our, our open, well, not our open space, but our farms and the forest and, and all the beauty that Auburn is known for. I have no fear of this group. If they'll, I have fear if we don't do something. Our staff is pretty good at what they're doing, but they're walking a tightrope, and if something happens, then they move on, or they retire, or somebody else comes in. Everybody's going to, any city employee is going to leave this up to interpretation. At least this group will put something down so that everybody will be judged by the same measure, and I have no problems with us counselors reviewing what they said. I think this will make it stronger, and I think it will make it better for Auburn, and try to protect the stuff that we all hold dear.
Other questions or comments from the council?
I've got a question.
Counsel Walker.
Going back, uh, if you want to go back 80 years, they've been clearcutting South Auburn for many, 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 many years, and they're still doing it. They haven't stopped even yet. So no matter what kind of rules you have down here on paper, nobody's changed the clearcutting rule. They didn't do it six years ago, we didn't do it last week, and they didn't do it 80 years ago, so clearcutting has been allowed. If you want to own that land, cut 40 acres of wood off from it, it's your business. You want to burn it all for firewood, or sell it all, it's your business, and you may make a hundred thousand dollars off selling it, and you're not going to claim it either with anybody, because you'd have to be a little bit on the foolish side, because you're going to pay taxes.
Other questions or comments by the council? Okay, so a few, a few comments here. Um, I, I think there's, uh, a lot of confusion among counselors about what this does. I would point your attention to the information sheet and the charge to this committee, which is extraordinarily narrow. What the charge is, is it says, "The Mayor's Ad-Hoc Committee on Bonafide Agricultural, Recreational, Natural Resource Land Use Committee will develop criteria to be used when determining if a business or land use, if implemented, will constitute a bona fide farming, agricultural, recreational, natural resource use pursuant to the City of Auburn Code Ordinance of Section 6145 A1B2I." This is exactly what it says today. There is nothing in this committee to relitigate the years of discussion that went on to change the ag ordinance to what it is today. What the council did in the past was it said that a bona fide agricultural or natural resource use had to be taking place in order to build a house. This won't change that standard in any way. It won't change that language in any way. The committee is not charged with proposing changing the ag standard. What the committee is charged with doing is making clear what the criteria is that will be used. Criteria that's, they're using today that no one in the public knows what it is. When these folks come in and they have a proposal, they bring it to the planning department. Planning staff looks at it, they confer with the ag and natural products working group, they have a discussion about it, they try to decide whether it's a bona fide activity or not. The idea here is to have them come forward, tell the council what the criteria is that they are going to examine, when they're going to make a decision if something's bona fide or not, so the council can consider putting it into the ordinance, so the public is clear about what they're going to do when they review these proposals. There is no authority for them to make any recommendations to this council about changing anything in the ag ordinance. The only thing they have, would have authority to do, if this is adopted, is to come forth with suggested criteria. If members of the council are not satisfied with the way the current ag ordinance is written, they can certainly bring forth to the council alternative proposals to change the ag ordinance, but that's not what this is. Counsel Weisner.
Thank you. Thank you. I was just letting you finish. I didn't want to interrupt. Um, so I, I have a, a proposed amendment to this. Um, I see you have, um, everybody from certain boards made up. Um, I'd like to, if the coun- if any counselor would like to, um, second my amendment is to, to this, is to add, uh, up to two people from the public to be added to this group, because I see there, there's people from the, these groups, but I think it would be a great addition to add two members of the public, um, as well.
So Counsel Weisner has moved to amend the, um, the, uh, motion to include two members of the public. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counsel Gary. Any discussion? The vote on the amendment would be by roll of hand, excuse me, show of hands. All those in favor? All opposed? Four having voted in favor and two, uh, in opposition, the amendment is adopted. The, uh, question now before the council is the original motion as amended. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, is the question, the, uh, council ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All those in full favor of the motion as amended? Opposed? Four having voted in the affirmative and two in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next order of business is Order 12409162024, amending Appendix A fees and charges to include fee reimbursement. Refund polyas, a policy as presented at the May 20th, 2024 workshop. Um, you will recall, um, this is a, uh, two substantive changes to the fee schedule. One is, uh, consolidating the reimbursement language that currently existed, and the second is to add a new reimbursement, uh, authorization for, uh, text and map amendments if not, um, uh, approved by the council. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Counsel Gary. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Whiting. Uh, if any member of the public, uh, we'll open public comment. If any member of the public would like to comment on this item, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close, uh, public comment. Discussion by the council.
I've got a question.
Counsel Platt.
Thank you. Um, is this partially, um, a strategic move so that the committee that's looking at the fee schedules will be able to, does it give us any more latitude? How does this, how does this relate to the current exercise, um, with the fee schedule committee?
Um, I, I don't think that this has any direct effect, other than as that committee is reviewing the fee schedule. If this language is amended before that work concludes, then they would be making recommendations on the whole fee schedule, and I suppose could make any recommendations on this particular, uh, item. Counsel Weisner?
Thank you. I, I thought this was from the committee that they had done, because I know that we were working on that, you guys were working on that at the time, and that you'd come back with these recommendations from my, from my thoughts with this. So it seems to be some confusion on...
Uh, it, this is not a recommendation from the committee, Mr. Manager.
So just as a, go back in time here. So what we had was, we had two city counselors that had requested that the city council provide a refund to a petitioner on a zone amendment change. The council did not have the authority, based on ordinance, to be able to provide that, that refund. Um, one thing that we changed as we started, so this has been changing in a process, the first thing that changed was moving the Appendix A out of the ordinance and then adopting it as an order. So if the council wants to make any changes, uh, they could do that by a simple order and make changes, which is positive as we move forward with any fee adjustments. The staff's position is, if you look at the, uh, the first information sheet, is that if the council chooses to make an amendment, I'm sorry, and chooses to make a refund to this, uh, property owner, we'll get to that item after this, what we support is the language that's in this amendment to the appendix. Staff still, now if you move to the second information sheet on May 20th, 2024, staff's position is still, we do not believe that we should open this, um, box that we're, we're opening currently as far as, uh, refunding petitioners for zoning changes. Uh, we will be the only city in, uh, the seven largest communities i- in the state that will provide a refund, uh, to petitioners. Um, we just don't believe that this is a, a, a good practice, because there's a lot of work that goes in, staff time, on preparing petitioner's requests before, um, before the planning board. And so, uh, so our position is remaining the same. However, if the council chooses, then we support the language that's being provided.
Just as a follow-up, so, so I understand the language proposed in this, uh, action is, um, suggested by staff. It would fit possibly the next action, uh, if we choose to go down the road of reimbursement. These, this suggested format is what the staff would suggest. Is that correct?
The, yes. If, if this were adopted, you, you would be able to act on the next, uh, order of business. If this is not adopted, you would not be able to act on the next order of business. And, and I guess I would pose a question to the counselors who brought this forward, Counsel Walker or Counselor Milks. Based on the staff reports, my recollection of this is this is being brought forward to be able to facilitate this refund any, in this, any particular unusual circumstance? Is that, is that...
That's correct. So my reason for doing this is, I agree with the, with the manager that we shouldn't be doing refunds. When people bring something forward, if they get a vote, up or down, they shouldn't be getting a refund. My issue with this particular issue is we never took a vote. So that person brought something forward, we never took the vote, so they never were given, uh, ju- you know, adjudicated on the, the thing that they brought forward, and so for that reason, we should be able to refund that person, because that, we didn't take action one way or the other and give them an answer. That's the reason that I, I, I proposed this refund and agree with Counselor Walker on the refund.
Counsel Walker.
Also, we're only given half back if we voted to happen. We're not giving the 800-plus back to this person.
Only that we, we're not giving the money back to them that we spent on advertising, only on the specific fee to put forward the action.
Counsel Whiting.
Yeah, I, I support this only in, on the basis that we're discussing right now, which is, this should be done very rarely, because we shouldn't be in this situation normally, but at least we'll have the option to, you know, make something right.
Other questions or comments by the council? So look, I, I think the council's in a very difficult position with this. I, I think everybody on the council, my recommend, uh, recollection of the prior discussions, everyone on the council is sympathetic to this particular constituents' concern and, um, request for the, for the refund. Um, I, I would point out that, um, in deference to the staff memo, um, you're setting, if, if this is adopted, th- there's nothing that says it has to be an unusual circumstance, and you're setting a precedent. So my advice to the council, if, if the council feels that they would like to, uh, be able to have the authority to take up the next order of business and make the refund, that you adopt this. The, um, following up on Counselor Platts's comments, the fee committee is going to be reviewing this. The fee committee, when they bring back their recommendations to you, can review this, and if they think this is too broad for further action in alignment with the staff memo, they can make a recommendation when, uh, the fee report comes in before you to modify it, reverse it, or whatever. And, and that would be my advice, is a potential path for the council to move forward on this. Any, any other questions or comments? Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hypothetically, if we pass this, anybody else that perceived that we wronged them, that they can get something passed, can, will this open the door for them to come back to get their money back?
Not, not in the past, and, and they don't have to perceive that they're wrong. The way that this is written, as the staff has pointed out, in order to give authority to do this rebate and this, uh, this refund in this particular circumstance, it's simply that the council did not pass the ta- text or map amended amendment that they asked for. I, I, I don't believe, and Mr. Manager, you can weigh in here, I don't think that this has any, um, necessarily, uh, retroactive, um, um, effect to people a year ago, or two years ago, or three years ago, or something. Is that correct?
That's correct.
To Counselor Milks' point, the scenario that we might run into, it's not, it's not one... To Councilor Milks' point, the scenario that we might run into, it's not, it's not when we vote something down, it's if we table it. And, and I believe in this scenario, we did, this was a zoning amendment that we tabled. Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't know that we want to go down a long rabbit hole discussion about Robert's Rules of Order. But the council rejected this, and I get it, there's some confusion about that. The motion was made by Councilor Whiting to indefinitely postpone. The effect of that was saying no in one meeting, instead of having to have two meetings, since this would be an ordinance change that would require public hearing and two roll call votes. If the council wasn't going to pass this, it was basically a procedural move to say no. I, I understand Council Milks has a very good point here that the public doesn't appreciate that. And, and I've talked to this constituent as well, and he, he doesn't think he got a clear answer from the council. Any other questions or comments from the council? Council ready for the question?
Another question. So, Mr. Manager, if this passes, and then the council takes action on something in the future, what is the recourse, what does this ordinance do, what does this order do that somebody couldn't do before? And do we then, we could still reject their request?
Correct.
But anybody can come, so that's my question.
Yeah, yeah, no. So someone has a certain timeline where they have to submit to the clerk for reimbursement. Then you as a council will have to make a vote on whether or not you reimburse that individual upon their request.
And I think my only point on that, why this, I agree with the staff memo, this will be problematic going forward, is you're said, if you would have passed this, adopt this, take up the next item and adopt it and provide the refund, you're setting a precedent that if the tax or map amendment was not approved, that a refund is in order. The council can certainly take whatever action on each individual item that comes before them. But I think that the council would want to act in an equitable manner to anyone coming before the council. And that's where the potential issue would, I think, would arise. Other questions or comments from the council? Council ready for the question? All those in favor, excuse me, the vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? All opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item of business is Order 12509162024, authorizing reimbursement of a zoning petition fee to Robert Ganyan in accordance with Order 12409162024, which is the order that the council just adopted. This is the issue, as was pointed out in the prior discussion, of refunding $400 of the $700 application fee for a map and tax amendment that wasn't adopted. The 300 that's not being reimbursed was advertising expense to the city. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Milks, seconded by Councilor Gary. We'll open up public comment. If any member of the public that would like to make a comment on this item, please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close. Public comment, discussion by the council. Is the council ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item of business is Order 12609162024, authorizing Assistant City Manager Dennis Dutte to serve as the alternate municipal official member on the Andrus Goggin County Budget Committee, representing County Commission District Five for budget years 2024, 2025. As you'll all recall, typically the city manager fills this role. The county has recently released their budget schedule and most of the substantive meetings are in the two-week period that the city manager is going to be on vacation. So we, the proposal here is to authorize the Assistant City Manager to ask, act in that role. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Council Milks. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Walker. Any discussion by the council? Council ready for the question? The vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed?
I'm in favor.
Okay. Six having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item of business will be Item 11 from the Consent Agenda. Order 12109162024, approving the renewal of an auto graveyard junkyard permit for Dawn's No-Preference Towing, DBA Morris Auto Parts, 940 Washington Street North. Councilor Weisner?
I'd like to make an amendment to Order 121-09162024, order that the city council hereby approves the annual renewal request for an automobile graveyard slash junkyard permit for Dawn's No-Preference Towing of L.A. DBA Morris Auto Parts, 940 Washington Street, subject to the following conditions imposed pursuant to Section 14-74A Code of Ordinances and 30AMRS subsection 3751 at sequence with the following sequences.
And those are the conditions provided in the staff memo, correct?
Correct.
The, there's been a motion to amend by Council Weisner for Order 12109162024, imposing on the approval the conditions provided by the staff. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Council Gary. The public comment will be opened. If any member of the public would like to address the council on this issue, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close. Public comment, discussion by the council. Council ready for the question? The vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Five having voted in the affirmative, one being absent, the motion is adopted. The next order of business is also from, carried over from the Consent Agenda. Order 11109162024, appointing Arthur Wing to the Auburn Housing Authority Board of Commissioners for a term that expires 10/1/2029, as recommended by the Appointment Committee. Council Milks?
Yes, so my, I'm going to, I would like to recommend that we reopen. This is nothing, I don't know Mr. Wing and this is not any reflection on him. I know he's been on the board for many, many years. I think with today's, in today's world, and we have a homeless situation, we have some, I've met with, I'm not, I can't say who it is, but an official agency that deals with folks that are at that level, that are looking for housing, have some very strong concerns about what are going on at Auburn Housing. And I think that I'd like to open up to additional applicants and go out and advertise. And I think it's important for us to, to have some new folks come in and, and apply for this board. And if they determine that, you know, Mr. Wing is the best, then that's, so be it. But I would like to see us open up and advertise for additional members of the board for Auburn Housing.
Other questions or comments from the council? Council Platts?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I actually have a question for the clerk. Do you know when the next vacancy is open for that committee?
Yes, give me just a moment, please.
I only ask that because if there's a vacancy that opens theoretically next week, it could be a moot point. But Council Milks' point is well taken.
These vacancies are, they're for five-year terms. The next would expire next year, October 1st.
So not for one year.
Other questions or comments? Council Whiting?
Yeah, I'd like to comment. Mr. Wing has a number of years of service in a very complicated position. I was in a similar situation when I ran the Housing Authority many years ago when the city council was imposing term limits. And Norm McKeon was the only person with any experience on the board. He was a former school committee member, he's a former city councillor. And I literally begged the city council to keep him on the board because you need institutional memory. I left the agency, I'd been there 40 years. Art Wing is the only person with anything close to the kind of institutional memory that I had with the agency. And I think it would be a grievous mistake to remove or potentially remove, you know, a dedicated public servant who's, you know, basically devoted many years of his life, most of which as chairman in a difficult job.
Other questions or comments from the council? Council Milks?
Yes, and I, I respect Councilor Whiting's opinion. My concern is, from what I understand, is that we've got a person that's managing, that's, that can't come to the office. We've got an assistant manager that lives well far away and is not in the office. We've had issues within Auburn Housing and I think it's time that we need to, to see if there's some other folks that can come in to take a look at what's going on in the Board of Directors. Similar to what we did with the airport, which was very effective.
Before we take further questions, I'd like to clarify something here. I realize that the director had a period of time when he was unable to come into the office. That was because he had a medical condition in which illegally authorized accommodation was made. That is no longer the situation. And I can tell you that when I was first elected, the, the director was unable to come into the office and meet in person. And that is no longer the case. I've met with him several times in person since then. So I just want to make that clarification about the director. Council Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm perplexed because Auburn Housing is a separate entity. They come to us when they need to have an impartial person to find candidates to fill their board. We use them when we need them to help provide a service. In other words, they're like a contract person that we hire for a service. And so I think to try to tell them what to do, I think that's out of our realm of authority. We can suggest changes and stuff, but I think they answer to main state housing. They don't answer to us unless they misappropriate some money or something that we've worked with them on. And that's the only thing that I think we have authority on. And so when this, I disagree with taking this person off the Auburn Housing Board because like the good Council Whiting said, this guy has never, pretty much never missed a meeting. He's always prepared. He knows what he's talking about. He also takes the time to help those that are on the board understand things. I mean, he doesn't strong, yeah, he don't strong-arm them. He's very impartial. He tells them both sides of the story of what would happen, good and bad, for whatever vote if they're confused. So to take him off and put somebody else with less knowledge would be detrimental to Auburn Housing.
So just as a point of clarification for the council and the public, the council appoints the members of the Auburn Housing Authority Board in the same way they appoint members to the Auburn Water District, or the Auburn Water Sewer District, or people to certain members of the Library Board. It's an independent authority, but the board members are appointed by the council. Other questions or comments by the council? Council Milks?
Just out of curiosity, I mean, is there any conflict of interest with, with somebody that's a resident of Auburn Housing voting on who's going to be the director of Auburn Housing?
That's a question.
Well, it, I, so, Council Milks, you can raise the question of a conflict of interest. The board, the council would then have to vote as to whether or not Council Gary has a conflict. I think that the, the statute and the ethics rules are pretty clear in Auburn. That one, to have a conflict either has to have a direct pecuniary or financial gain, or they have to have a particular personal gain.
Fair, I have just a question. I retract it.
Council Gary?
I will recuse myself from voting if there is a perceived conflict of interest because I do live in Auburn Housing Authority building. I do not, I mean, I don't go out to eat with this person. I don't, I don't socialize with most anybody. So, I mean, I have no financial gain. I pay my rent like anybody else, but I will recuse myself.
Thank you. Other questions or comments by the council? So the, I have a couple questions for the clerk. This, this, the terms for the directors of the Auburn Housing Authority are posted on the website under their committee. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And the posting for this position met at least the requirements and the ordinance to be publicly posted and, and be posted for at least 14 days prior to the closing of applications. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And any applications for this positions were forwarded to the nominations committee for consideration. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And my recollection of the packet is that Mr. Wing was the only applicant for that position. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Council Whiting?
I'm just thinking back to my years of service at Auburn Housing Authority. There was a time when we had a position that wasn't filled for over a year by the city council. At one point, before I retired, I sent out letters to eight different people asking them to apply. It's very difficult to get people to serve on these boards. When you have a dedicated person who works really hard at learning the job and being an effective chair of the board, it's really a slap in the face to take the kind of action that Councilor Milks is recommending. So I strongly urge people to support this application.
Any other questions or comments by the council? Council ready for the question? The vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Three having voted, two having voted in the affirmative and three in the negative, the motion fails. That concludes our new business. We'll move on to reports. So for the mayor's report, there's a lot going on the last week, two weeks. The, I would like to commend the folks that organized the Blues and Brews Festival, the Communication Community Engagement Team. Also for the help from Public Works, Fire Department, Police Department that helped put on the event. And of course, none of this would have been possible without our major sponsors, Emerson Toyota and Andrus Goggin Bank. Really great event, well attended, a great weather this year, and kudos to everybody who put on this great event. A couple of comments on the fire on Mount Auburn Avenue. I want to recognize the Fire Department for all the great work that they did and the 13 agencies that responded in mutual aid. Also, the Police Department, Public Works, for assisting the Fire Department with the fire scene. And I would especially like to recognize the Fire Department's command staff for the incident command structure. It's a very, very complex and difficult task to coordinate 13 inbound fire departments to respond to an incident like this, and they did a great job. Council Walker and I attended the groundbreaking at 186 Main Street. Great Falls Construction, as folks know, is building a multi-use building there. 18 apartments, a brew pub, restaurant space, and retail offices. It was great for that to get underway. We're all looking forward to the grand opening when they get the construction done. I attended, a number of councillors attended, I represented the city council to 9/11 Remembrance Service. Very well attended, and the Fire Department, as always, did an exceptional job. job putting that on. Counsel Whiting, Walker, Platts, and I attended the annual employee lunch. It was a great opportunity to chat with some of the employees, and I think everyone had a great time. The assessors talked about the revaluation presentation, a couple other events, the Greater Andersgarden Humane Society Annual Banquet was last week, our Animal Control Officer and Jen Edwards from Public Health, they're in the new informational video that they played, and it was great for them to participate. It's an organization that provides a great service to the community. The International Paper Box Factory 50th Anniversary Event was Friday. Great organization, has 139 jobs there. It was a great opportunity to meet with a number of the staff and represent the city at that event. Direct Support Personnel Day was last week, so I had an opportunity to participate in that with John F. Murphy Homes, had quite a lot of time to speak with staff members and clients. And the last thing, the Rally for Recovery was at this last weekend. A number of our members of our Homeless Committee participated, there were probably about 40 organizations represented, and maybe 100 or so folks, and had an opportunity to speak at that representing the city. Councillor's report, start with Counsel Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our ABHOP Committee for the Homeless, they met last week, or at least most of them, most of the members were there. They're working very diligently, combining all the information that they've received and we've been working on, and they're coming soon in front of the council with their presentation and recommendations.
Thank you. Counsel Whiting?
I was so impressed with the Y outdoor facility off Stetson Road that I rode my gravel bike on the trails there today, and then I exited on North River Road and noticed that the dirt roads in the Y trail system were better than North River Road.
Counsel Milks?
I just want to welcome Mubarak to, I got that right, right? Okay. And I have been getting all the benefits of short meetings, and you got here, and now it's been a long one, so, but I'm glad you're here, and it's an exciting thing to be part of decisions that affect and how the community goes, and so glad you're here and glad you're participating, you too and I.
Counsel Weisner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations on being sworn in. We look forward to having you with us. Congratulations and many thanks to the Fire Department, as you said, for the work that they did when that tragic fire happened. We've heard it, we've heard from citizens, many people unhappy with their taxes going up and the stabilization, the reevaluation, but I think it's been mentioned many times that there's only so much that we can do as councillors, besides when it comes to the budget. We know what happened with the budget, and those facts are out there, but when it comes, we keep hearing, it's law, it's state, it's state law, and it comes to legislature. I implore our elected officials to step up and do something to help the citizens, that when we as a legislature can't change the laws, it's up to our representatives to be up there fighting for us. We heard some of the citizens talk about some of the votes, but having, I implore them to step up and help make change, to help our citizens. Like, single-family houses went through a huge hit, and things our seniors went through by submitting all those forms for the freeze, that stabilization, and it was repealed. So many of them, as we've heard tonight, went through some unfortunate events with that. So again, I implore our legislators to work hard for us and to step up and, again, work for the citizens of the city of Auburn. Thank you.
Counsel Walker?
Thank you. I just want to echo what Ben just said as councillor, and I agree with him. We all need to step up and really work hard to figure out exactly what we're going to do for next year's budget.
Counsel Platts?
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up from my school committee update. Last week, I mentioned updated enrollment numbers. I've passed out to all the councillors the updated enrollment numbers as of September 13th, so three days ago, I think that's Fri-, maybe? Saturday? Friday? Friday. So you'll see those, the big numbers here compared to last year, the school department's up 1.8% in enrollment. Just to cherry pick a couple stats, the largest increases in enrollment were seen at the high school and also at Park Avenue, which according to these numbers is up over 10%, I think up almost over 12%, with the largest decreases thus far being seen at Sherwood Heights and Fairview. I don't necessarily think we can make any inferences from those numbers, but good to know. So that's the update. This chart is posted on the school committee webpage, and I've also given it to the clerk, so it'll be in the minutes for this meeting.
Representative Iggy?
I kind of just wanted to say that if you have recently turned 18, or if you're anyone, just make sure you register to vote, so your voice can be heard this election.
Representative Abdullah Hay?
Oh, um...
You don't have to provide a report if you don't have one, just so you know.
Yeah. I'd like to say thank you, for like all the congratulations, like that's really it.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
I'd also like to welcome our new student representative, and I appreciate the comments by the council regarding staff and the Fire Department, obviously with the fire that they had, a huge challenge ahead of them to protect those other commercial properties. Very, very pleased with the work that they provided that evening. Also, the mayor mentioned Blues and Brews. We do have applications that we can try to see what our turnout is at these events. We had over 1,200 people at the festival, and their average stay was three hours. So that means those who came really stayed and enjoyed the music there, enjoyed the festival plaza and everything that they were able to provide. So appreciate our vendors that come out to try to help make that a successful opportunity for our community. Thanks.
Thank you. That ends our report. We'll have the second open session of the night. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the council on an item that's not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium, provide your name and address.
Thank you. Earl Bickford, I've lived in New Auburn for 22 years. However, I was raised in Sydney, and back in 1974, when I was 10, my dad offered to hire me for a dollar an hour to haul wood off our back lot because we burned wood. So I accepted that job. A dollar an hour, $6 an hour now, so for a 10-year-old, that was pretty good, and I learned a lot. I learned not only to work hard, but I learned that my work had value and that I had something to offer, and it was proven to me by the money put in my hand by my dad. I also learned to save money. I also learned to be frugal about spending money, and I do appreciate that some of the council seems to be angling toward being frugal during budget season, but I will be here, and other citizens are going to be here to remind you how we've been hurt. But imagine if my dad was doing a project, and then he overran the budget, and he came to me, who's been working for a dollar an hour hauling wood in, and said, Earl, give me your jar, and he put his hand in, and he took $600 out of that jar. Well, I know the city's not my father, but the money's mine. I earned it, and I appreciate the value of money that I earn, and so I would ask you to appreciate my money also. On Thursday, I visited my parents, they're in their 80s, and I told my mother what my real estate taxes were, and she said, that's morally wrong. The wisdom of 80-year-olds. Anyway, I know, I have faith that you're going to do something about the budget, because there are items that can be trimmed on that, and not everything's mandated by the state. And Earl Bickford only has so many, $600 to hand out. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that would like to address the council, please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close the open session. There are no executive sessions tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? The council will be adjourned.